Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the City Council meeting for Monday, October 19th in 2020 to order. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised, there's a copy of the Open Meeting Act posted in the back corner in the northwest by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the pledge allegiance, followed by a brief period of silence.
Hi, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the order of business of the City Council is as follows. So clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and then those in favor should speak first, then those opposed second. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition of the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for any future agenda. Will clerk please call the first item of business?
A brief announcement prior to our meeting, limited seating is available in the council chambers. You may wait in the Bill Luxford studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you have finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. On our first item for today's agenda for City Council Monday, October 19th, 2020, is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Would anybody like to come forward to speak on anything on the consent agenda, items one through two?
Now, yes, Mr. Brown? Under one A?
Yes. Mr. Brown? Come on forward.
Good morning, good afternoon, everyone. Sorry. I've never been first, actually, so I'm a little bit thrown off by that. My name is Lori Seibel, last name is S E I B E L. I'm the president of the Community Health Endowment. And just as a moment of information, you may know that the Community Health Endowment has fifteen trustees. And of those fifteen, twelve of them are appointed by the recommendation of the mayor and then with the confirmation of the city council. And it's always a pleasure to come before you and introduce a new trustee nomination to you. And I get to do that today with Quentin Brown. He's going to tell himself a little bit about you, but we look forward to working together.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
So I won't bore you with the details on my resume, but I think, because I only have five minutes, I think. But my wife and I, we arrived to Lincoln about sixteen months ago, so we can't claim the new car, but we're still relatively new. But as we arrived, we talked about, as we came, we wanted to be a part of the community. We did not just want to be consumers taking from the community and, you know, doing what we so chose. So having an opportunity to give back and serve in this capacity means a lot. I currently serve as executive director over at Educare in Lincoln, over in the Belmont community. And I recognize a few familiar faces around the table. And to, you know, to incorporate the health component, we actually just started a health services advisory committee, whom some people in this room, the organizations may be represented on that committee. So to say that health is important, we did this not because we had to, but because we wanted to. So this opportunity married with the opportunity that's before us with Educare to really incorporate health into the work that we do, because we find it important. And to carry that outside in the service capacity and serve alongside Lori with a credible organization, with outstanding leadership, means a lot and provides a great opportunity for us. So I'll respond to any questions that you may have, but I'm simply looking forward to digging in my heels and serving.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Brown? No, I want to thank you for coming to town and helping out with Educare. And Educare is such an amazing program. I was involved when we got that started with L P S.
And thank you.
Doing amazing things over there. And I think it's, it'll be great. Lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward for any of the consent items at this point?
Forester is here.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Chris Myers, Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I'm here this afternoon to introduce Mark Wilson as nominee for the position on the Community Forestry Advisory Board. Mark is a professor at U N L and has been active in re-tree, or let's see, yeah, re-tree as well as planting trees for the department over the last ten years. So with that, I'll ask Mark to say a little bit about himself.
Well, as you've heard, I'm an active tree advocate. My profession is in biochemistry, so this is in my capacity as a private citizen. And my immediate concern is that there has been a longstanding decline in urban trees in the community forest in Lincoln. The official statistic is three trees are planted for every five removed. And that may be favorable. That may be higher than is currently the case. There is an urgent need for advocacy for tree planting to heal those gaps in Lincoln's community forest and hopefully lead to a more resilient urban canopy. I'll also point out that I moved here fifteen years ago and was told by the person recruiting me that more or less every tree in Lincoln was planted. I grew up in Cincinnati, Ohio, so that was incomprehensible to me. It was, it was filled with trees. So I think it's important to understand that nearly every tree here is an investment of a former Lincoln resident or maybe a current Lincoln resident in the community. And that is something that I think is important to continue through, in this case, membership on the Community Forestry Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any questions? Seeing none. Really appreciate your taking time to help out the community. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Item one C? Thank you.
Good afternoon. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. I'm here, very excited to introduce Lorenzo Ball as our appointment to the Planning Commission. He's here to answer any of your questions. And he will be filling out an unexpired term out to the year 2025, so it's kind of a long-term commitment here, so. I didn't tell him that yet, so, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, City Council, other elected officials in the room, that may be in the room. Thank you for allowing me to potentially take this position. I'm pretty excited about it. Just to give you a little bit of background of myself, I'm new, fairly new to Lincoln. I moved here in 2018. I have primarily experience in private sector, so no public sector experience, but I've helped Fortune 500 and Fortune 100 companies really understand strategy. How do you grow? My background is in data and analytics, so obviously I bring that, that experience to the table. But as I moved to Lincoln, I know I was embraced by not only the community, but the business, you know, community as well. And that is an attraction. So if I can do anything to help not only our residents, but our business community build and grow and thrive within Lincoln, I would love to participate and help that. I have some young children, fourteen-year-old and twins who are six, who keep our lives busy. And the education system has been excellent in Lincoln as well. So as I look at the community, I look at the neighborhoods, I look at the businesses, we have something really great and really good here. And so if we can not only help our residents, you know, prosper here, but also be able to attract as we grow, I would like to be part of that and help that given my experience. So appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to helping Lincoln thrive.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ball? No, again, thank you so much for wanting to give back to the community and be part of our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else like to come forward on any of the other items on the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Corey Sinclair. I'm with Backswing Brewing Company. We were asked to come down to answer a couple of questions about the event that we're planning for October 30th at twenty-one oh one Van Dorn Street. Basically, what we're doing is where the old Dairy Suite building was that got taken out by the tornado. And they are currently, they've got about three or four food trucks sitting out there every day. And they asked us to hold a beer garden out there. And this is, initially was more of kind of a trial run for next summer to see if this is something they might want to do on a weekly basis. But so what we're looking at doing is basically fencing off a beer garden. They've got a huge lot out there. I believe it's about fifteen thousand square feet total that we'd have. So we did write down up to a thousand people on the, but I don't think we would, I mean, through, that was over a ten-hour period, and I don't think we'll, especially with the weather, I don't think we'll get anywhere near that many people. I would, I'd expect probably two to three hundred total throughout the day. I did speak with the Health Department earlier today, and they requested that if we move forward with this, that we get tables and chairs, just to help keep everybody separated and define the areas a little bit better. And we'd be more than happy to do that. So if anybody has any other questions about?
Mr. Sinclair, thank you so much for coming down. I'm glad that you were able to make it today. And I had a chance to talk to the Health Department as well this afternoon. And they said that they're still working on your D H M, but, okay. But I'm glad that you've agreed to get the tables and chairs for the spacing. I was just concerned with that number. And certainly, the weather doesn't look favorable for a lot of outdoor time on Saturday. But, but maybe, you never know.
Yep, yes. I'd look, two weeks out, I mean, it could change ten times, but the, looked like maybe it'd be about fifty that day.
Yeah. So can you tell me, if you were to have a few hundred people at the site, where would they park? And how would you manage the parking?
So on the, on the map that we sent in, it would be to the, I guess it would be to the east. So there's an area out front where they already have a roadway and a parking lot for the food trucks. And then there's another parking lot across the street. And then they said that we can also use the entire lot in the field that would be to the east of where we would have the snow fence line for the beer garden. So it's, it's probably two-thirds of the lot that would be available for parking. And that was kind of one of the things they wanted to find out is if they needed to, if they were, if we would do this next year, if they would need to add some parking over in that area for future events.
Okay. Any other questions? No, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
Just real quick, Sony, on our, on our other S D L for the patio area, was, is that administratively approved? Or do we still need to do anything else with that?
I will double check and follow up with you on that. I think I signed it and sent it, but I believe I may have just sent your one. But I will double check.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to come forward to any other item on the consent agenda?
Can I ask one other question? Is Pat Lopez still here? Or anyone from the Health Department?
Pat? Yes.
Oh, the door.
Oh, she's.
Would you like to come forward?
I have one question for you, Pat. I'm going to put you on the spot, and my apologies, Director Lopez. I'd like to, to know if you have an opinion on whether or not we should approve the backswing as a conditional until you've provided the D H M guidance?
Yeah, and it's mainly the safety plan guidance, so let's just say it that way. And I'd be very comfortable with that. I meanable. I think it's a good idea and will, will work with him. And he's been very cordial and really wants to make sure he has a safe event.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. We can move on, right?
Mr. Chair?
We need a motion.
Yes. No, before, so we have two other applications very similar to that. Would it be, I'd like to hear from those applicants if they have a moment. If they're in the room and like to.
They weren't asked to be here because those are all on private property.
Okay, never mind. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Would you, are you going to want to make an amendment or?
I will, but since we have to call them one at a time, I'm going to let you get through A, B, and C.
Okay, sounds good.
We can now vote on these items. Item one A is appointing Quentin Brown to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 1st, 2023, introduced by Ward.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is appointing Mark Wilson to the Community Forestry Advisory Board for a term to expire August 14th, 2023, introduced by Ward.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one C is appointing Lorenzo Ball to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for a term to expire August 24th, 2025, introduced by Ward.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one D is application of Backswing Brewing Company LLC doing business as Backswing Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately one hundred and twenty feet by one hundred and thirty feet at twenty-one oh one West Van Dorn Street on October 30th, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., introduced by Christensen.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward.
And I would like to offer an amendment or another motion on this one. You guys can choose which parliamentary piece you'd like to take. I'd like to amend it. Let's amend it. As a conditional approval pending receipt of an approved safety plan.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Yes, Councilperson Ward.
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question for someone is, if we do it conditionally, and the event is Saturday, how does that work? Does that mean, is it for law? Pardon me, Councilman Christensen, but how would that work? Could we have, thank you, Tanya, for coming up. I just want to make sure that, that he can get it on time. That's right. It's the 30th, okay. I still would like some clarification. Thank you.
I'm Peter, Assistant City Attorney. His event is October 30th. Because of timing, we were already pushing the state filing, so what we've agreed to is if he meets all of the conditions, his event can proceed, or if he doesn't, Sony is not going to distribute the S D L that the state would issue. So he has enough time to get his safety plan done before the 30th. It's really just making sure that we get the paper printed for his S D L, and he can have it by the, by the 30th.
Okay.
But I think we should be fine.
So thank you for that. So it would appear then on our agenda next week, if we approve it conditionally today, then we would vote again? Or does it just automatically? I don't know that we've done this with this council before, so I don't know how it works.
Sometimes you do it with actual locations, like new licenses, when they need a special permit through zoning, and you'll approve it conditionally that they get a special permit. So it'll just be one of the items on the list. And Sony will make sure that they have a safety plan before she releases the S D L, so.
So procedurally, it's fine?
Procedurally, we should be fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Any other comments on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, it's called a roll on the amendment.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Now call the motion.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one A is application of Boiler Brewing Company LLC doing business as Boiler Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately fifty-seven feet by twenty-eight feet at one hundred and twenty-nine North 10th Street on October 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. November 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. November 21st, 8:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. And December 12th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m., introduced by Roy Christensen.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one F is application of Rising Storm Enterprises LLC doing business as storm seller for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately seventy-nine feet by seventy-nine feet at thirty-two, thirty-three, half-south 13th Street on October 29th, October 30th and October 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., introduced by Christensen.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Items two A and two E, introduced by Christensen?
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Thank you.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, moving on.
That ends our items on our consent agenda. We're moving to section four, public hearing and liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items four A and four B together. Application of L Major Mexican Restaurant Inc. doing business as L Major Mexican Restaurant for a Class I liquor license and the related manager application of Ernesto Pineda Maravilla, located at three one 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 Northwest 12th Street.
Is Mr. Maravilla Villa here?
Hi, I'm Ernesto Pineda.
Raise your right hand?
Yes.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ernesto Pineda, and I'm representing L Major Mexican Restaurant. The restaurant is located at three one eleven Northwest 12th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. It's a new business in town, and the reason why I'm here is because I like, I would like to get the license for the liquor, to sell liquor to my customer. They ask all the time for, for that when they get a meal.
Okay, did we have any questions? So this is the best restaurant in, a Mexican restaurant in Lincoln?
Yes, yes. We have authentic Mexican food there.
Yep, because it says so in the name, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, are you currently open?
Yes, we are open.
Okay, and how long have you been open?
For three months. We opened July 7th.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
I'll be calling item four C, manager application of Mitchell H. Martin for Qdoba Restaurant Corporation doing business as Qdoba Mexican Eats at two six four seven to eleven North 12th Street. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you're about to give, the statements you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Mitchell Martin. I recently had another manager with the liquor application, and she moved to the other store, so I'm just applying for it. so I'm just applying for it myself. So we're just looking to serve just beer.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Seen none, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item 4D, application of McKenney's Pub LLC doing business as McKenney's Irish Pub for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 25 feet by 90 feet at 151 North 8th Street on October 31st, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, November 14th, November 21st, December 12th, and December 19th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Joel Schosso, J-O-E-L-S-C-H-O-S-S-O-W, 1053 Middleton Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska.
So.
Is this the, one of the applications getting a, thank you? An amendment? That's for TV. Amendment, okay, so we all.
More than just. Tell us about the, yes.
Oh, I get all of them.
Are these the amendments? Oh, have you seen these?
Hi, thank you. You're very good.
I have not seen them.
Okay.
Oh, got it. Thank you. Thanks.
So Joel, I think what we'll do is we'll take all these into consideration in a group, and then we, if you want to stick around, we may call you up.
Okay.
As an individual, unless you have something to say right now you would like to say.
I'm here to answer questions.
Uh huh. We appreciate that. I'd like to have our city attorney come up and explain a little bit of what these amendments are.
Yes, Johansson Christie, City Attorney. The 4D through 4I, they should all have amendments, and it's substitute resolution, and all it is, is you're just considering the October 31st date. And so that's the only change. So it takes away November 14th, 21st, and the 12th. So these are just in front of you to be considered for the 31st. That's the only change.
Question for you then.
Yes.
Can we? We're going to vote on everything individually. Can we vote to do the substitutes all together and then vote on each thing individually?
That would be a good question.
You want to just have, just vote to substitute for all of them?
Since it's only a date change.
I think so.
Then come back and do each application.
Then come back and do each one individually after that.
There will be new amended applications.
Correct.
For just the one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Johansson, I have a question. So we're only going to be considering Saturday, October 31st, but their application is for multiple dates? How do, what does that do to their application? So will we see another, them come before us again for the next date in November? Do they have to fill out a new application? Do they have to pay another fee?
So my understanding is no, they will not have to pay another fee, but I'm going to let John Carlson come up and explain it, because that has to do with how we determine the priority in the rotation, and he's more familiar with that.
Yeah, that's fine. John Carlson, Mayor's Office. No, you're absolutely right. So basically, it's just reflecting the rotation of the underlying approved special events, right? So they will come back to you before, but there's not an additional fee, there's not an additional anything. It's just that in order to match the rotation of the approved special events underneath, then they'll, they'll come back. All of these are the block that's basically the 8th Street kind of Haymarket block in terms of that particular special event. And so they're, they're in the rotation for the October 31st, they're also in the rotation for the November 14th, which will come back, but then they're the sit out for November 21st if they want to do it and come back in, because we have three special event areas, but only enough resources to staff up two at a time, so that's the rotation. So the initial application set all the requested dates on it because everybody wanted to do all the dates, and this is the way we're able to fully staff them, is to rotate them in. So there's no additional charts, they're just broken up so the dates get approved as they come forward.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is, one of our concerns as the council and the city and all the participants is the security aspect of it. I'm a little concerned about this, and so this will help us address that better.
Correct.
Having enough city staff to make sure that these venues are safe and secure.
Right, so when we do special events on public property, one of the requirements is that they have off-duty LPD officers there as part of the event control, and what LPD tries to do is they, they use past, past events and the floors, the floor, square footage required or asked for, and the occupancy asked for, and figure out what the staffing requirement's going to need, need to be. The length of the event also plays into that, too. If you have a night game, whenever your game is, you're likely to need two shifts, so those positions will have to be replaced. And so based on the available resources of officers, we can accommodate two of these larger three-event areas, and we thought the fairest way in order to do it was to have them take turns one sitting out on each game day, in order to make sure, yes, that they were fully staffed and secure.
Yes, Councilwoman Christensen.
Mr. Chair, I move substitute resolutions on items 4D through I, stating these are approval for October 31st only.
Well, seconded, because I still had questions.
Been moved and seconded for amend the motions by Councilperson Raybold. Now we can have discussions on the amendment.
I didn't want to have a discussion on the amendment. I was going to get ready to ask a question in the early discussion, so when we come back to a discussion on the.
Motion.
On the motion, not the amended, please.
Make sure you get called on. I will.
You?
I got a question for you, Mr. Carlson. You said special event.
Right.
Somebody is not allowed to have an SDL on public property without being approved as a special event?
Right, thanks for asking that. So there is a difference. So on private property, let's say you have a parking lot next to your business, you can apply for an SDL in order to be able to have a special designated alcohol license on your private property. But once you ask for use of the, of the public way, then you need to, for any kind of an event, then you need to go through this, to get a special event approval for that. So let's say you wanted to close off a block and you wanted to have a neighborhood event close off a block, you'd have to get a special event permit, there'd have to be appropriate traffic control and appropriate security control that went along with that. If you wanted to have alcohol at your event, then you'd need to apply for an SDL, especially designated license, to have alcohol at your special event. So you need to have the special event if you want to use the public right-of-way, and then the SDL if you want to have alcohol at your event on the public right-of-way. So absent the special event, there's no need for the SDL, because you don't have an event to have alcohol at.
Councilperson Raybold.
So since these events are being proposed on public property, do they also have to be in compliance with a directed health measure on, in securing their event like some of the other ones, and just like on the one that we recently approved?
Yeah.
A conditional approval?
Again, I'll let Health speak to that if they want to speak to that, but certainly everybody is under the auspices of the directed health measures and their requirements for gatherings, absolutely.
But has the Health Department approved each, each one of these as well?
Health would have been involved in the, in the Events Committee, they're a member of the Events Committee, and so they would have offered guidance and will continue to offer guidance in how that event has to, has to transpire.
Well, I know that we had just made a motion to approve that the previous applicant had to make sure that they had the approval from the Health Department, so is it, I guess, fair to say that, that was not taken care of for that previous one?
Right.
For the application of Backswing Brewery, Brewing?
Right, and there would have been an additional review, because the ones on public way would have been through Special Events Committee where Health would have been involved, and the one privately would have just be coming through for the SDL and would have not to have reviewed by the Special Events Committee, although they may have been reviewed by Health anyways, because during the pandemic, oftentimes they'll reach out and say, can you take a look at my event? I want to make sure I'm holding a safe event.
Okay, so I guess it's safe to assume that these applicants also had to go through the health screening process?
Yeah, and I would just add that I think in the resolution language, it says that you have to follow all directed health measures, and that.
I see. You're right.
Yeah, and so.
Okay. That answers that. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Since Councilwoman Raybold asked the question about special events and the order of it, is it fair to say that that process is confusing and may not be obvious to every applicant that it's special event first and then the SDL? And I know I've just added to a leading question.
Yeah, well, we hope not, we certainly don't want it to be. I think there certainly is, these particulars of this circumstance where we wouldn't even be having this conversation last year, because none of these have been allowed on a game day.
Correct.
And so to the credit of council, I think, to the credit of staff and the business owners that have approached us, we're trying to recognize we may have some additional capacity because of the change in the Big Ten and the fans not having fans in the stands. So given that additional capacity, council changed the ordinance to allow this conversation even to happen, and unfortunately, we don't have enough resources to give everyone an event on every game day, so we tried to create the rotation. But they, but yes, certainly, as we've all tried to move fast in order to provide that opportunity, the communication has fallen down here and again. I've been on the phone with property owners, trying to make sure that they have the right information, and I certainly apologize to any property owners that have gotten confused during the process. We've been trying to move fast to create the opportunity, and we'll continue to talk to them and try and make sure they have appropriate information.
And then one last question. Can you tell me how the special events, I think it's, it would be Special Events Committee, came up with the areas and priorities?
Right, so in, in general, the three kind of event areas that we have that are requesting these are Canopy Street, obviously on Canopy Street. We have 8th Street, which involves the applications that you see here, and does kind of go around the corner onto P Street as well, and so it picks up McKenneys and Lazlos for what they want to do also. And then we have 14th Street, which was also interested in doing a special event in that area also. And so we have those three areas. When we worked with LPD, LPD said, we really have, and looked at the requirements for all those different events, they said, we really only have enough officers, off-duty officers that would volunteer to come in and staff those events to do two out of the three. And so we looked at the game day schedule, the home game day schedule, created a rotation by which two of those areas could have their events on any given game day, and then the third one would have to sit out and then be rotated in for the next game day. So really taking turns was the way that we tried to come up with, so everybody got a shot to take advantage of this opportunity.
Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
And then, John, we had a discussion that we understand the workforce crunch with our law enforcement, because we just don't have the capacity to cover all of these, but because it's on public property, is the way the statute or the ordinance reads, is it a requirement that they have law enforcement there, or can they demonstrate and provide their own private security detail to handle an event where they know that we don't have the law enforcement capacity to allow everybody to do it on a certain day, like Halloween?
And I think I'm going to ask city attorney and maybe police chief to come up and help with those questions in terms of their recommendations to provide event control.
Chris, City Attorney, well, I don't have the statute in front of me. It's my understanding, to try to be as clear as possible, no, it does not exactly say that, but I think that it says the city is responsible for public safety. And so under that language, when the city is becoming responsible, we would have, you know, the city, whether it's LPD, to provide the security enforcement. It gets very tricky, very difficult if the city's responsible, yet it's not the city's employees that's responsible for the event, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, chief, this is very unusual. I mean, we, we haven't allowed this, and I, I know you have a staffing issue, because our officers have been through a lot.
They have. Jeff Blimeister, Chief of Police, and so I'll try to walk you through some of these processes. Typically, and that occurred this year, when our officers bid for the coming year, which would be in December, they are not able to take game days off, so previously identified Husker home football games off, so we closed that staffing option. The only way that they're able to do that is if they take vacation in week blocks of time, and that occurred this year. Well, when there was an announcement that the Big Ten was no longer going to have football, then those dates were opened up to afford our staff the opportunity to take that individual day off, where previously they could not. But then the schedule also changed. It's not the same days that were previously scheduled either. And so that's one of the stressors that are coming about. And I do, I applaud the efforts of those businesses that came forward, the city staff, the special event staff that have tried to work to make amendments to all of this, because I continue to be in this risk mitigation mode of how are we going to be able to provide staffing to these multiple different venues and do that in an expedient and efficient manner, when we've just now learned of the game time for October 31st. And we, it would be disingenuous for me not to bring up other stressors. We have staff that have contracted COVID-19. We don't know how many staff will have contracted COVID-19 and be unavailable to work on October 31st. We do know that October 31st, Halloween on a weekend day, is traditionally a day that we have heightened need for police resources. And then we have to look at the current state of events in Lincoln when we're looking at violent crime, and it's 20% higher than it has been over the last five years. Those are priorities that we absolutely must respond to before staffing these. So we're trying to find this balance, and I think that we will, but once again, we just need to evaluate it as we go forward.
Okay, Councilperson Ward.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't, I may have a question for law, but I want to first, I have a comment and then a question, but first want to thank the bar owners, the restaurant owners, as the chief said, commend you for applying and trying to make this work, and none of us have done this, so we're all in uncharted territory, so it's really difficult, and And everybody, I think, is beginning to experience the COVID fatigue. So here we all are. And I want to thank, especially, I spent time on the phone this weekend trying to understand some of the questions that my colleagues just asked. And so I'm sure that ad nauseam, to hear it time and time again is where we're at, has been very helpful to me. So to law and to the LPD and to the restaurants, thank you, because we will get there. But we're all trying to figure it out as safely and as efficiently as we can. So my question really, and maybe it's first for councilwoman Christensen, and then for Mr. Christie, your amendment to offer these just on October 31st, does that mean, Mr. Christie, then our bars and restaurants have to reapply through this permit process every time? Because as it reads now, it's for all the dates. Or do we, or maybe it's for Tanya, Ms. Peters?
I was looking at Tanya to get confirmation, but no, it's my understanding they will not need to reapply.
Okay. So help me understand why, what this amendment would do?
This.
Or why you want the amendment?
The amendment is needed so that we can rotate the police services available so different areas can have the SDLs overlaid on top of the special event. Because right now, we don't have enough resources to have a special event space policed for every area that wants one.
I understand that.
So this would say, okay, this, these applications are only good for the 31st, and then those other applications will just come forward, not reapplications, they'll just be brought forward at the time when their turn to have their special event and SDL arrive.
I thought we already had that rotation schedule in place. Does that change that, or am I just?
It doesn't change that.
Okay, okay. Yes, please, do you want to, that would be helpful.
It seems like she wants to add something.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
You would have, it was a mistake on the law departments between staff and attorney. So the staff put in all the dates, and it wasn't caught. Normally, you would have only had October 31st. It was just merely a mistake. So next, we'll bring the next one forward under the same app, assuming that it works fine, right? We don't have to make any tweaks or whatever. But we're not trying to add extra burden on anybody else but city council and city staff in making sure that we're just approving these slowly as we discussed a couple weeks ago, so.
Okay, that helps.
Councilperson Raybold.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for Chief Blimeister.
Okay, well, my question's for Tanya.
I can stand here.
So, Tanya, I know that when you presented to us before, it was, we're going to try this, we're going to see how it goes, but it's not a guarantee that it's going to be approved for the next weekend. We're going to try to give plenty of time to be able to do that, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you said, like, this first one was going to be like a test run to see how it goes.
Correct.
Who it is, so.
So October 31st is kind of a test run. You may have another application kind of pending in there, right, for the 14th, because we got just a short time window there, but we gain a little bit more space as we go on. So like, the first test will be this 8th Street corridor, 8th Street, see how it goes. Because this will be the first time, other than Canopy, that we have overlapping SDLs by people that don't normally work and serve together. So that'll be the Arcade, Brewskis, Buzzard Billies, serving liquor basically on top of each other. So that's new to us, and we're going to just kind of see how it goes. We'll bring the next one to council, the next group or whatever to council. And so we're trying to staff two of these events at a time. And somebody might pull out or, you know, want to do a different date or something, and we'll try to get all this stuff to work, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for Chief Blimeister?
Chief, councilperson Raybold brought up the question about private security. So I'd like your comments on private security on public property.
Perfect, and I didn't address that, my apologies. So law enforcement officers, even in quote "off-duty" capacity or "extra-duty" capacity, which these would be, have the same enforcement authority as what they do when they are on duty. So that does allow them to issue citations in the event that there would need to be citations issued. It does allow them to take individuals into civil protective custody if they are unable to care for themselves because of the level of intoxication, both things that cannot be done by private security. In addition, it is a safety issue both for the patrons and for the staff, the officers that are working there, because they do have the ability to quickly communicate via the police radio, sorry, pointing at my microphone here that is not there, and ask for or draw additional resources from on-duty in the city in the event that there would be a need to intercede. And hopefully, that provides a little bit more of a perspective.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Carlson.
So there will be two special events going on.
Right.
At a time. This one, and if we approve the next group, the next week or two weeks later, for the 14th and O Street. But we're going to be, Canopy Street will get one every week, right?
No, they have to sit out, just like the other ones.
Oh, they'll sit out. So we won't have two special events then going on, or?
We will have two each week.
Okay, and they're part of the rotation, they're not every week.
Correct. So, right, between Canopy, 8th Street, 14th Street, A, B, C, get A and B, then B and C, then C and A, then A and B, everybody sits out one week.
You know, and there's some feelings, probably, that they would all like to have the first one.
Yeah.
And just because it may be warmer, or it's the first night game, or it's Halloween, and so there would be an advantage. Many of them feel like they should be the first one. How did we choose who got these?
So basically, we went by the completed applications. So the two that are starting on the 31st had their completed applications in, and so we gave them the first, the first two slots.
First come, first served.
Right.
And that was done by the Special Events Committee?
Right. That was the recommendation, and the mayor approved.
I see Ms. Washington would like to ask a question.
I would, thank you.
With the microphone? I would, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'm gonna, I have a question that sounds a lot like a question you've just got. You said there's two special events happening the weekend of October 31st. Canopy Street, which is really operating under their dine-out, and then 8th Street. But when I look at the applications that are on our docket today for the 31st, I under, I could see that three of the applicants were working together on one SDL, one event, overlapping, but one. And then I could not see that Tipsy Tina's was operating with the rest of the patron, the rest of the businesses on 8th Street. It looks like they have a separate one, and their fence line does not duplicate, doesn't overlap the fence line on 8th Street. And then McKinney's and Lazlo's are separate yet.
So, right, so they will have, again, so that, and that is one of the virtues of having the independent SDLs. It's because they have their, their SDL indicates what their alcohol sale plan is. The ones interior to 8th Street that are interior to that fencing, they may have a combined plan for how they're going to handle their alcohol sales. The other ones will have their own independent plans for the purposes of the SDL, the specially designated alcohol license. For the underlying event permit, they're all in that event area. So there's 8th Street, there's McKinney's right around the corner, and there's Tipsy Tina's immediately corner. So when I say 8th Street, it's the 8th Street area, but all of them are in that special event.
So they're all in one special event plan?
Right.
So if I see, so I see fencing drawn out for three of the applicants. I saw porta-potties on three of the applicants, but no porta-potties on the others. So I was like, well, they're not going to provide that? Where's their fence? You know, so I'm just trying to figure out, if they're all one special event, they're all sharing the insurance, the fencing, the porta-potties?
The security costs.
Security costs, all of that is in the special event, which doesn't clearly show in these applications.
If I may, so we're using two events kind of generically. We got these applications, and when we're seeing them, we're seeing them that there's kind of groups or pods of interest. And so what we did with 8th Street, McKinney's, Tipsy Tina, and Lazlo's, instead of requiring them each to hire their own off-duty, which would be required, we're combining them together so they can share the off-duty and they can float where needed between those businesses. It didn't make sense to put them on a different day for their small things. So while they're not one event, like, they're kind of, it's one area that we're focusing on, if that makes more sense. Just trying to make as much as we can happen, right, on the same day. If we didn't do them that way, that wouldn't still maybe allow another bigger event to happen. It just would mean maybe more cost borne by one group than another, so.
Right, and there's an economy in terms of providing those officers, because a small event like that may not fully utilize one officer when you could float between the two.
So one, another quick question then, is that, so the Lazlo's entrance, the McKinney's entrance and stuff will be behind the fences at this point?
Um, so.
And Tipsy Tina will be? Are we going to fence off the whole corner?
L T U did not require the streets for the north, 8th and P going north to be closed, did not require, 8th and P, 8th and Q, right? Did not require P going west to be closed, or 7th Street to be closed, to make Tipsy Tina, McKinney's, and?
Lazlo's?
Lazlo's work. Because they're just taking some parking stalls, a little bit of sidewalk space, just to get a few more tables. L T U thought that there was enough space for travel with some signage and everything, they weren't going to require the street to be closed down. If we required the street to be closed down, that would affect more businesses, affect potential parking, and obviously increase the cost for people that are just trying to basically kind of do what we proposed with dine-out and just get a few more tables.
Is there a reason we didn't include Canopy with them? They're all down in the Haymarket together.
So Canopy is already approved under the dine-out, under that same concept. They closed the street down between R and Q. And so they're already approved for the 31st. They will have off-duty. So we had enough, we think, hopefully enough officers then to staff that 8th Street group along with Lazlo's, McKinney's, and Tipsy Tina.
And I think the answer is even, right, in between, though Canopy and the Haymarket are both, both in the Haymarket, functionally, you can't have officers float between them. And so you have to staff up the 8th Street area, and you have to staff up the Canopy event. So even if we called them the same event, we'd still have the officer issue. It's not that we could call them one area and all of a sudden provide another area. It's still all the officers that are required in order to provide event control.
Yes, councilperson Cho.
Just to stick with the officer point, I'd like the chief to come back up and add some more comments to that, if you would.
Must have heard you.
Chief, is there anything you'd like to add to the conversation so far about staffing and floating officers? And is there anything you'd like to add about?
Yeah, I would. And this kind of goes back to councilwoman Raybold's point of evaluating this. This is the first time that this has occurred. And we hear every single day where the majority of the population is being asked, stay home. Don't go into confined places. Don't contribute to the spread of COVID-19. And what we're asking our officers to do is to go into these areas and participate in these events in an extra-duty capacity. And so I do have extreme reservations because I don't know, sitting in front of you today, whether or not we are going to be able to fulfill the requirements needed for the SDL and special events that is occurring on Canopy Street, for that, that is occurring on 8th Street, P to Q, and then the overflow into Lazlo's, McKinney's, and Tipsy Tina's, in addition to the requests made by the University of Nebraska, which are still there. And on top of that, a normal game day detail of where we're trying to prevent overconsumption and medical issues on the part of overconsumption in the areas immediately north of the University of Nebraska, where there's traditionally student housing from occurring. So that is a continuing concern. I don't know if we're going to be able to staff to this particular level. And if we can't, or if there are events that occur on the 31st, then I'll definitely be back in front of you saying, this did not work, despite the best efforts of the owners of the bars, of the city staff, the special events staff, and of city law. And so I appreciate you asking that question.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion to amend? Is that correct? Does everyone understand the motion to amend? Okay, why don't you go ahead and call a roll?
I actually do have a question regarding that. Sorry. The motion to amends that I had passed out to council, they all are specific to the bill numbers that were assigned to each of those items.
Correct.
Correct.
But they're all doing exactly the same thing to each one of them, which is limit the date to the 31st. And so we asked our city attorney if we could do this, the answer was yes. So this is just amending all of them individually together?
Okay, so just for clarification, would I need specific verbiage to allow my correction to show that we're amending all of those together?
I think so.
I believe so.
Would I need a motion or a correction from council?
Make a friendly motion or correction.
That was the, I understand is the motion is to amend all of them together.
Okay, thank you.
E, F, and G.
Yes. D through I, I believe.
No, that I.
No, no, D through H. Then after that, we'll.
You know, motions as amended, right?
Yep. We haven't voted to amend them yet.
Yeah.
That's what's on the front of us.
Most of the time, we would need the motion on the table to amend it. So I would probably rather go back and do these individually.
I would.
But in order to do that, you have, in order to do that, you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so I was wondering if you would.
Withdraw it.
I'll withdraw it.
That's what I was asking originally, why we were doing it.
And I'll withdraw my second.
And withdrawn?
It easier, that's all.
And then we'll call each one individually.
And amended.
And amended.
Individually. Thank you. Okay.
Let's see here.
So now we're back to 4D?
Yep. Are we on 4H?
B.
We're on D.
Or D.
Okay.
We'll do those individually.
We call the roll, or call the motion?
Read the motion, then we'll make a motion to amend.
Yeah, she's going to call each motion individually.
Wait a minute.
Yes, but we have to have the hearing on all these items first. That's what I was wondering. We have to have a hearing on the other two.
We do have to have a hearing now, so.
So, 4D?
4D, is there anybody else who'd like to come forward?
On 4D?
On 4D.
On 4D?
Now Joel's up.
This ought to go fast after this.
Joel, thank you for listening.
Welcome. I guess I just have a statement on it, since I probably don't get to ask questions. But my statement is that it's not a free-for-all, that there are individual seats for each person, tables and chairs. So we're not going to be cramming, and I hate to even say this, but like St. Patrick's Day is a event celebration. This is not an event. This is overflow seating for restaurants. People are going to be seated, it's going to be limited capacity, we're not going to be stuffing as many people as possible into this area. I am fully confident that our in-house security can handle this even without LPD, and I think many of the other restaurants and bars would feel the same way. I understand that maybe you need a little extra presence in the area, a couple of off-duty officers to kind of float back and forth. I get that. And I think that's reasonable. I think to have multiple officers in the area might be a little bit of overkill on what we're doing here.
Yes.
Wouldn't you finish with, yeah?
That's basically what I'm saying.
You have a question?
I'd give a little bit of a statement more than a question. I think we agree with you, and we feel that all the business owners will do their best to make sure our community stays safe. We're concerned, I'm concerned about that Husker fan who has pent-up Husker enthusiasm, and here's, this is their first opportunity to hang out with other Huskers, and whether they'll listen to you or not. And that one person who's had one refreshment too many, upset with someone else who's had one refreshment too many, and the safety of our community at that point. I think that you and all the other business owners are going to do your best to make sure the community stays safe, but we can't control every individual in Lincoln. That's my concern.
I absolutely 100% agree with that, but that can happen.
Any weekend in Lincoln, yeah.
And there are many other bars and restaurants that will be open in that area besides the ones that are applying for special events. And so I would say it's almost more likely not doing this, because this way, we're giving them more space, we're giving them more area to spread out, individual tables. Not doing this, we're not going to be able to let them in our business. They're going to be roaming the streets. There's going to be a lot of people downtown. The reality is, there's going to be a lot of people. If we give them extra space to sit and have a meal, enjoy the game, then we're creating an outlet. If we close our doors at our capacity, then they're walking around on the streets, and LPD is responsible for them anyway.
Any other questions, comments for Joel? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on 4D? 4E?
And just for clarification, since we discussed the October 31st date, I will only read items 4D through 4H for the October 31st date and strike the rest of the verbiage following. So item 4E is application of Fast Taco LLC, doing business as Tipsy Tina's Taco Cantina for a specially designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 25 feet by 100 feet at 800 Q Street on October 31st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Anybody like to come forward on 4E? Anybody like to come forward on four E?
Only if you have questions.
Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Thank you very much. Hi. I don't realize, I don't think I realized that you were...
I'm both.
You're both, all right. I had one question on this one because I didn't see it noted. Were you able to reach all of your neighbors, adjacent businesses who would also be affected but weren't participating, and get their sign-off?
We would be only in the parking stalls to the west of our facility. There are no other businesses adjacent to that. Now, there are some across the street, and I can get those approved. It'd be Lead Belly and JJ Hooligans would be the most affected by it, I would say. But it wouldn't be affecting the ability to get to and from their business. The sidewalk is open. The parking in front of their business is open, as usual.
All right. Well, thank you for, that was my question, because I was trying to count the spaces that were being affected.
On that side there, I think there's only three or four parking spaces.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I had practically the same question. Where would this 25 by 100 be located, on the west of your building?
Yeah, on the west side of our building, there are, I believe it's three, but it could be four parking spaces.
There's kind of a loading dock area.
And then the loading dock area. That would be all we'd be using. And it's basically tables and chairs, overflow seating.
Okay. Any other questions? Seen none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on item four E? Seen none, you can call four F.
Four F is application of Benchmark Redevelopment Inc. doing business as Buzzard Billy's Armadillo Bar and Grill for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 300 feet by 43 feet on Eighth Street between P Street and Q Street on October 31st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Would anybody like to come forward on four F? She read four F, didn't she?
I am Stephen Engel, S-T-E-P-H-N-E-N-G-E-L, 1621 South 27th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm a managing partner at Buzzard Billy's Starlight Lounge. And we had an agreement with Brewskis and Versus Arcade that we're going to try to plan this the same way, and I agree with everything that was discussed previously. Couple things maybe to add is that we're not trying to do this as a competition where we're trying to sell as much alcohol as possible. I think that was agreed upon with Brian Kittin and I both kind of said, you know, what we're doing is trying to space out. So agreeing with what Tipsy Tina's has also said, that we're doing this to, you know, to make the health mandates easier to comply with. My fear would be that, on a normal game day, that people would be forcing themselves into those restaurants. And we do that for every weekend right now, where we're stopping people, and you do cause that irate customer where, "Why can't I get a drink? There's other people." There won't be standing room at the bars, you know, that kind of thing. So we would stop people at the door, especially for the inside seating and everything else. We have a system in place where we will text the customer to allow them to come in once their table is available. So then they could go out into the street area, have a beer, sit down in that socially distant area, and then allow them to come into the restaurant. Once we text them, they have a table available at that point. We thought that was the best solution to allow people to be happy, not turning them away, and still have business in the Haymarket area. A little bit on the concern of the security and everything with the, Benny, with the irate customer, we've been dealing with it for 20 years. I mean, we know what we're doing. We haven't had any liquor violations in those 20 years, and not even on game day, when these events would normally not take place. But we've been kind of arguing the whole time, I think we could handle it, you know. So the other point I think I'd like to make is that we haven't had any violations to the health mandates at this point. We've bent over backwards to comply with the PPE, enforcing the mask mandate, enforcing the six-foot rule distance, and trying to do that, you know, we're costing ourselves business. But what we are hoping for is to keep the public safety in place. And that's our number-one goal right now, is to make sure that the public is safe, our employees and staff are safe, and that we can still, hopefully, recover some of the losses that we've had throughout the year, which I could imagine every bar and restaurant has been hit hard by COVID-19. I would also like to say that I'm the president-elect of the Haymarket Association down in the Haymarket, and we voted unanimously to approve these SDLs.
Okay.
And that's it. I'll take any questions if...
Any other questions for Stephen?
I have one.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Engel, thank you for coming down. I want to first compliment you on this joint plan that you have with the other neighboring businesses. It looks like you really do have a good special event happening here with the video tracking, people being able to watch the game while they're waiting for a space inside or while they're enjoying the beautiful weather we're bound to have in Nebraska.
Awesome, thank you.
I did have a question because it looked like there was some confusion about, at least on the paperwork, not probably in your plans, on how many people you expected at any time. There was a, you, there was a number that said you projected 300, but that you thought there might be 500. So I was just curious.
Where we wanted to limit it to is, once we're in that spot, is to make those tables six-foot distance apart. And I think we had the count where it was in question a little bit, but as long as all the tables had eight or less people sitting at it, which we were able to consult with the Health Department, that we want those, the same as what we're doing inside, and that they're six-foot apart, no more than eight people. And I think we were still somewhere in that 300 range. And only eating or drinking once they're seated.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay, thank you for coming down.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to come forward on item four F? Seen none, go on to four G.
Item four G is application of Brewskis Food and Spirits, Haymarket, doing business as Brewskis Food and Spirits for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring 300 feet by 43 feet on Eighth Street between P Street and Q Street on October 31st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Morning, council. Good afternoon, council. My name's Brian Kittin, K-I-T-T-E-N. I'm the owner of Brewskis Food and Spirits. And I will be partnering, hopefully partnering with Steve at Buzzard Billy's and VS Arcade in doing this once-in-a-lifetime event. So I'm up here to, hopefully, once-in-a-lifetime, to answer any questions that you may have of me and/or of the event that we're planning on doing.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kittin? Nope.
No, good.
To get the same compliment.
That's the advantage of being...
I like it. He's one of the last ones.
Yeah. They answered all the questions. Okay. We move on to four H.
Item four H is application of Kills Crane Inc. doing business as VS Arcade Bar for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 300 feet by 43 feet on Eighth Street between P Street and Q Street on October 31st, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Nice T-shirt.
Taking us back.
Got to represent the Arcade Bar, right? Josh Root, owner, manager of Versus Arcade Bar. Sorry, what else do I need to state? My address, 5658 Harding Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Josh?
I have no question, but you get the same compliment that your two cohorts got. Thank you for planning a good event, and welcome to Upstairs.
Yeah.
Okay. Seen none, thank you.
Thank you.
Four I?
Four I, application of Lazlos Inc. doing business at Lazlos Brewery and Grill, Haymarket, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 92 feet by 23 feet at 210 North 7th Street on October 31st, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Good afternoon, council. Jay Jarvis, J-A-R-V-I-S, 6630 Park Crest Court. Basically, we're applying to just extend out into the five parking stalls on the west end of our property, excuse me, that we just added the dine-out tables a few weeks ago. So we have a couple of big TVs out there, and it's just a dining room extension, about 58 people.
Any questions for Mr. Jarvis?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Just so I'm clear, right now, you're using the sidewalk on the west side.
Yes, sir.
Going to step out to the parking slots.
Yes, sir.
So it's just kind of like, you've got 58 people, just don't worry outside space now for a weekend.
Right. Just for that Saturday.
Yeah, just for Saturday, excuse me, not a week.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none?
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to come forward on item four I? Okay. Seen none, let's call the roll. Or call back to four A and start calling the motions.
I move approval of items four A, B, C, and I. They don't require any amendments.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington, and we approve four A, B, and I.
C and I.
C and I. A, B, C, and I.
Wait in a second.
Yes, Councilperson Washington seconded. Do we have any discussions on those?
Nice grouping.
And I. Okay, seen none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
I will move item four D, and then move motion to amend number one on four D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on both the motion and the motion to amend by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions on the motion to amend? Seen none, please?
Jane has one.
Yes, Jane, sorry.
Yes. Well, I just want to commend city staff and LPD, especially Tanya and John Carlson, for really working hard to make this happen. I know it's something that is very unusual, but we do recognize that we are going through unusual times. We want to make sure and recognize that we can help our businesses whenever and wherever we can, so we want you to succeed. So I am going to support all of these.
Okay. Please, no other questions? Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Now the main motion. Anybody have any comments, questions? Seen none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Yes.
I move approval of item four E. Need a second?
Yes. Second.
And I move a motion to amend number one.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded for the motion for...
Is this supposed to be easier?
Seconded by Councilperson Ward. And the motion to amend, number one for four E, been seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any questions on the motion to amend? Seen none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Now call the main motion. Any questions? Okay.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Call the main motion? Second. Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Showb.
I move to a motion to amend number one.
Yes.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Showb for motion to amend number one for four F. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Christensen?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Want to say yes a bunch of times.
Yeah, much of what... I move approval of item four G.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold.
I move amendment to number one, to item four G.
Second.
Been moved and seconded amendment by Councilperson Raybold. Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
I move...
Main motion.
No, we got main motion. Okay, yeah, I'm getting punchy now.
I know.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Now I move a motion, approval of item four H.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold.
And I move motion to amend number one on item four H.
Second.
And moved and seconded motion to amend by Councilperson Ward. Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our liquor items. Section 5 is our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for September 16th through September 30th, 2020.
Can you call him up? Yes.
You can.
My name is Darrell Podany, P-O-D-A-N-Y, live at 1600 Urbana Lane in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm appearing before the council today to request assistance regarding a property claim that I filed against the city and was rejected. Background and circumstances regarding this are that on Monday, September 7th, I left Lincoln for a few days with my family, and was going to be gone for a few days, so I didn't really make any special arrangements to have the mail stopped or anything like that, but in the time that we were away. And I did have a friend who stopped over and did a house check and picked up mail and papers, things like that, on Wednesday of that week. On Friday of that week, I got a call from Lincoln Police Department where we were staying on my cellphone, saying that they were calling me to let me know that they had broken into my house to see if I was okay. I'm not faulting the police officer or anybody else, but what had happened apparently is somebody decided they hadn't seen me for, around for a couple of days, and wanted to call the police to see if I was okay. Well, they broke into my house, the officer did, and informed me of that, and then I asked what kind of damages there were, and he said, "Well, he broke in the door and broke the glass and went around, looked, and caused the damage." And I did send a letter to that effect to the city attorney, I don't know if you've seen this, everybody have this? And I filled out a property loss report, he told me to contact risk management, which is what I did. So, I filled out this form and sent that in, and then it took me a while to find a handyman who could actually do the repair. It's hard to find somebody to do those kinds of things right now because, well, the aging office has told me that they don't do, you know, they have a home handyman service, but they're not doing anything in homes. So, after I finally found somebody, he replaced the glass and the broken door, and I sent to you, or the attorney's office, a copy of the bill, you've all seen this, I think that, right, for $115.32. And then I also had pictures of the damage that occurred, I think you may have all, was this included with the information that you've seen? And I have other pictures as well regarding this. I'm not faulting the police department or anybody else, I'm just, I'm retired, you know, living on a fixed income, got a lot of bills. The day I got the letter from the city attorney telling me they weren't going to pay the claim, I had in that same mailbox three medical bills, you know, that I'm looking at paying. So, I guess I'm looking to see if there's any way that I could get, you know, the reimbursement for the expenses. I guess I'm asking if you have any questions about, that I can answer for you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Podany?
I do want to thank Councilman Bowers, I reached out to him, and he's been, you know, very helpful and kind of guiding me through this process here, so thank you, Councilman, for your assistance.
Okay, may have some questions for our attorney after.
Okay.
Regarding this item.
Right.
Thank you, Darrell. Can you give us a little background on why this was denied?
Well, yes, I think so, and I will try. I'll start with, my understanding, this was a welfare check. I think that LPD received a call from a neighbor, and they responded. I do think that they made attempts through the phone to locate the owner of the property. I think, while I don't know the exact time, I know that they weren't able to reach anyone, and then they went inside. Afterwards, they were, through their investigation and through known contacts and further research, basically, they were able to get in touch with the owner and speak with him. Generally speaking, I would just say that, big picture, oftentimes, the law department will take the position that we don't want officers to second-guess welfare checks, and so if they receive a call and a welfare check is warranted and they act reasonably, a lot of times, you will see the law department recommend that the claim be denied. Now, we do have no knock warrants, and I think that sometimes when, if LPD was to, you know, request that warrant, a no-knock warrant, and then they entered without, I think there's a statute that requires payment in those situations. So, sometimes that can be a little different if there's a warrant, and granted that you can go in without knocking, but a check welfare is a different situation.
Yes, Councilperson Washington.
I have a few questions, because I can certainly, I've called in welfare checks before. I don't think it required someone, LPD, to break in, but I certainly understand people who are concerned about their neighbors, who may have more years than they have, and so I'm curious, what is the LPD policy around welfare checks? You say that you try, you ask the officers not to second-guess a welfare check, so what's the policy?
So, I was just speaking, when I said second-guess, I was just speaking generally in broad terms about with welfare checks and having to react in the moment with the police officers. The specific policy, if you have more questions about the policy with LPD, I think that LPD could probably tell you what their exact policy is. I don't have it in front of me, and I don't have LPD's specific policy as it relates to that with check welfare.
Okay, so my questions really had to do with, what was the department's policy? Did the officers follow policy? And then, my last question was, who can ask for a welfare check? Is it reasonable for a neighbor to call and ask? Is there some, at some point, they say we won't accept a welfare request, a welfare check request from, I don't know, somebody who lives eight blocks away, or, I don't know, but.
Again, while I don't want to speak to their specific policy, what I will tell you is that there is a level of screening, and generally speaking, I think that it has to be reasonable, right? And so, that's, now, while that's not a very specific term or policy, LPD will receive calls, and I think that they have a system in place to make sure that it is a reasonable request, and that they should act on it. I think that, you know, for example, an anonymous complaint that doesn't have detail, not a callback number, not a name, you know, that probably wouldn't be seen as warranted or reasonable if someone said, "Here's my name, here's where I live, here's how I know the person," and that sort of thing, versus just a random, "Go check this address." That's not going to, while I don't want to speak to their policy, that's kind of two different degrees of, one they might act on versus another one that might need some more research or steps.
Okay.
Might not rise to a check welfare.
I'm looking around, and I don't, I do see one officer in the room, and I won't put him on the spot of having to answer these policy questions. I'm sorry that I can't get them answered, Ben. All right, I have no more questions.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions. Are we sure that it was a welfare call, or was it something else that came up through Uplink? Because I know that neighbors sometimes will report things on Uplink, and then it comes into the city, and then it gets distributed out. Was the city then sent to Mr. Podany's house because it came in as a welfare check, or because it came in as mail hadn't been picked up, or someone had reported on Uplink that the yard wasn't mowed, or something like that?
Right, it was my understanding that it was an actual call from a neighbor.
Okay, and my second question is, we were able to get ahold of Mr. Podany after the window had been broken, is there documentation of attempting to call him before they attempted to enter the home?
I think that, I think that the answer is yes. Now, I think that it was, now, the documentation would be, I think, the officer's report. I'm just looking at it right here.
Yeah.
So, I think that, it was my understanding that the number that they had wasn't current. I mean, so they, I think attempted phone calls didn't have a current number.
Okay.
Then reacted, and then later on, got the correct number, so.
Okay.
And I, this is an unfortunate situation, I mean, obviously.
While we're waiting here, do we have any more questions for him on this? I have one on another claim. You have the file there, for William McFarland, where he's claiming an amount of $47 for damage to his mailbox that was struck by a street maintenance vehicle. And do we, and the reason for the denial on that was, or is?
Well, actually, there's a statute, well, there's a, in the municipal code, that absolves the city of liability for damages to mailboxes and other structures when the city is performing maintenance or repair work. So, there's a specific statute that speaks to it.
Okay, because what Mr. McFarland had said, that the street maintenance vehicle backed up and backed over his mailbox, got out, tried to place it back up, and then drove on down the street, so I guess our city is absolved from any, any damage then.
I would just tell you that there is a, again, I don't want to, but the way the statute is written is it absolves the city of any responsibility for any damages that occur, maintenance or repair work is performed by the city.
Okay.
And.
Goes along with snowplows, too, right?
Actually, that's exactly right.
Really, what it's kind of.
I understand that for snowplows, I guess I'm, when I read Mr. McFarland's letter, what I was wondering was, what was the maintenance at the time if they were backing up? Were they street cleaning and trying to execute a K-turn?
What was the last thing he said?
McFarland.
No, you said, "Were they trying to?"
Execute a K.
A K-turn, I mean, so like, when someone's doing street maintenance, or curb, or gutter, or something, there's a, you're usually running in a straight line, so to back up means what?
I guess the point I would make is, the only evidence we have that there was a city vehicle involved is the assertion by the claimant. We don't have any record of the city, any other record of the city being there.
Yeah.
I'm saying they weren't, but we don't have any evidence of it.
Well, that would be my next question, and it was the neighbor who spotted it, Mr. McFarland's neighbor.
Right.
Not Mr. McFarland.
And, yeah, and I think the information that we have is that, I think there were doing some pothole patching, at least in the area, and so, that was the information we got.
Okay.
So, it certainly would be, I mean, it's at least possible, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Be the same if his car was parked in the street and they backed into it, or?
Well, if I.
If it was parked in his driveway and they backed into it?
Mailbox and supporting structures.
Okay.
Probably not.
See, it's, it's, okay. Okay, Chief Boymeister?
I'll just.
You brought in the pitchhead or four?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Chief.
Chief Boymeister, thank you for coming back over. I looked up and you weren't in the room, I'm so sorry. Okay, I had a few questions about the claim that Mr. Podany put in. It was a welfare check, and I was curious, what is the LPD policy for welfare checks? And then, following up, do the officers who responded to the welfare check follow policy?
Okay, and so, the particular incident that you're referring to was brought forward to my attention a short time ago, and so, I have read the investigative report that surrounds that call. And the general policy would be this, so we responded to a call from a concerned party. We went there, we made some initial determinations, including excess mail, lights on inside, repetitive attempts to announce and try to get contact in, inside. And based upon the totality of that, there was entry, a minimal amount of damage, but yet damage that was completed to his garage. And so, I don't know further details of, was there additional phone calls made, was there additional concerns relayed? Basically, there was a determination by the officer and their supervision that exigent circumstances existed, and in an attempt to try to minimize harm or potentially save a life, damage was completed and done. We can always go back on these calls, and unfortunately, they are more common that we'd like to know, and exhaust other means. I don't know whether or not we attempted to make phone calls, but I can definitely try to make that determination or do further investigation on it, if the council deems appropriate to make a decision on this particular claim.
Okay, any other questions for Chief?
And thank you for coming back.
Yeah, my apologies, I wasn't watching, I was just in transition back to the office, so.
Okay, thank you. So, you have a question for the, for Darrell? Would you like, yeah?
Sure.
Did you have any missed calls on your phone from?
I had a call, and I returned. This is my cellphone, and I had received a call where I was, returned the call immediately, because I didn't pick it up in time, and when I returned the call, nobody knew what I was in regard to. So, I spent, I don't know how much time, you know, trying to figure out what the call was about, and eventually, then the officer did call me back. That's my recollection of it, so.
Okay.
You can see that I have the latest, most modern, up to the date, cellphone capacity here, but it does work. And I've had the same phone number, actually. If they try to call a number and said it didn't work, I've had the same cellphone number for 20 years, so. And I will say that also, I do leave, whenever I go on a trip, I leave on a radio, leave on a couple of lights, you know, and just things like that. I did have somebody come and pick up my mail on Wednesday, we're only going to be gone, we left Monday on a Labor Day holiday, there would have been, we were going to be gone five days, would have been back Saturday, and somebody was going to actually come over and pick up my mail on Friday night, but, you know, don't usually get a lot of mail, and that's not much to worry about. I have stopped my mail in the past, sometimes they miss a day, sometimes I got trouble getting it restarted, you know, so I just decided, well, for just the four days, actually, it would have been four days, it would have been Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it would have been two days mail, that would have been piled up, and if they say my mailbox is overflowing, it's kind of hard to believe that, so. But, like I said, I don't want to fault the police officer, I don't want to discourage anybody from calling in, you know, the fact that they called in, but all of a sudden, I'm stuck with, you know, $115 in bills that I, you know, didn't anticipate receiving at all. And, you know, but you got a lot of medical bills, and it's an older house, I live in a house that's going back, that was built around 1970, and fixing stuff up on it all the time, so I appreciate your patience and your concern, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilperson.
Actually, I have another question for the chief when he has a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief, for coming up again, we're going to keep yo-yo, yo, back and forth.
That's okay.
I want to focus on the welfare check. Your officers are doing what they think, if someone were to make a motion to have the city pay this claim, would that change anything about the way your officers do welfare checks?
It would not.
You would still do the same thing again, even, yeah?
Yes, yes, and because what I have learned from reading this, and which is common practice, is we're trying to make the best decision based upon a totality of factors that differs every single time, and unfortunately, sometimes that leads to property damage, damage that is done with the intent just to make sure people.
I think the claimant did say that he didn't fault the police, or they did, he understands that completely. Yeah, I'm not blaming him.
Nope, I completely understand that.
Thank you, that was my question.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we need to vote on the resolution. Do you want to read the resolution? Accepting claims?
Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for September 16th through 30th, 2020, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christensen.
I would make a motion to remove Mr. Podany's claim from the denied list.
Make it a.
And make it approved.
I think just by removing it from the denied puts it on the approved, doesn't it?
Nope, I think we have to approve it.
Yes, you have to make a positive.
So, what is your motion?
So, I would make a motion to remove Mr. Podany's claim from the denied list and move it to the approved list.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that we approve Mr. Podany's claim of $115.32. Yes, Councilperson, oh, did we have a second? Yeah, second, okay, go ahead.
Well, I would, I feel, for Mr. Podany's loss, we have had, in my time of the council, we've had probably we've had probably six of these issues come before the council. Damage done to a residence, a door, usually sometimes a window, by LPD in the, in the normal course of them performing their duties. And to this date, we have never approved one, at the advice of the city attorney's office. It sets a precedent that we probably don't want to engage.
Do we have any other comments? Yes.
I would like to say, first, I want to say thank you to Councilman Christensen, because when this call came up and I emailed my colleagues, he was the first one to figure out how we could get this resolved for Mr. Podany. So, you know, I thank you for the comments that you just said, but, you know, thank you for the ways that we could figure out a solution for this, even if this doesn't get approved. So I thank you for that. You know, the fact that, when Chief Blimeister said that this does not change how officers will do their job, is impactful, because no one wants to discourage officers from doing the right thing to protect residents in our city, especially those that they're doing a welfare check on. And I don't want to second guess an officer who is checking on the safety of someone in their home. Given the, the circumstances around this, and the fact that there is a minimal, there's a minimal damage that occurred, shows, I think, that the officer used good judgment when entering Mr. Podany's home to check on his safety. Saying that, I would be support, I'm going to vote to support to make Mr. Podany's claim approved, due to the fact that he, he answered the call right away, and he was accessible. He, it appears that he had things in line to make it seem that he was still home as he was going away on vacation. And the fact that it's $115 is something that I would say that the city can absorb, because thankfully, Mr. Podany's health and safety was not in jeopardy, but he was accessible. And I think that this is something that we can accept in order to ease the burden for Mr. Podany.
Okay. Anybody else would like to? Okay, see none. Let's call a vote on the motion to amend to accept Mr. Podany's claim with the city of Lincoln. Go ahead and call a roll.
Shob?
No.
Ward?
No.
Rebold?
No.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion lost. Five to two.
Now we need to vote on the main motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
I would like to take a five-minute break before we move on. So everyone be back here five till five.
Vacation two zero zero three, request of Nature's Variety Inc. to vacate all of Westview Avenue from the west right-of-way line of Southwest Thirty-Second Street westward on property generally located at two three five southwest Southwest Thirty-Second Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Tom Houston. My address is two three three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of M.I. Industries, Inc. M.I. Industries, you may be aware, has three locations in the city of Lincoln. It plans to consolidate its operations out here on West O Street. It is the parent company of Nature's Variety, which is the manufacturer of the Instinct food pet product. This is the first step of multiple steps that will be back in front of the council. What we have in front of you today is the vacation of this short little one-block stretch of a street called Westview Avenue. Westview Avenue is, as you can imagine, south of O Street on West O Street is pretty tough for access purposes, and it was intended to be a long-term solution to help provide access there. So it was not likely that we petitioned to vacate it, but it is necessary to allow the expansion for M.I. Industries. Their expansion would be somewhere in the neighborhood of one hundred and fifty to two hundred and thirty thousand square feet. That determination has not been made and will be made hopefully here in the next thirty to sixty days. The second step in the process for this project is really a replat. So all of this property that's owned by M.I. Industries will be replatted in one parcel for building permit purposes. And then the third and fourth steps will include a change of zone and then a redevelopment project. And we've been working with the urban development department on this project, and we have a draft of an amendment to the redevelopment plan ready to bring forward to you once the company makes a final decision. You may be aware that Nature's Variety had a redevelopment project three years ago, two thousand seventeen, build a new facility down here on this current lot one, but it was part of the first step of the major expansion. So the other thing I did want to point out to you is that we did work with the property owner to the north, which is Meyer Properties, on the vacation of this street, and we have been in contact with the neighboring property to the west. They had a concern about their access, and we do have a solution long-term. This is the plat that's going to be dedicated or and approved, we're working on right now, and the we proposed a dedicated additional right-of-way so that additional access road can be built to provide access to all the properties so that there's good access for all the properties south of West O Street. So this is step number one. Hopefully, we'll be back in front of you in the coming month or so, I think, with a redevelopment plan and the change of zone, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Houston? I have one quick one. Maybe it'd be more for planning.
Okay.
I'll ask him. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
David? Director Carey.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department.
A question would be, in this vacation of this, we are keeping easements across this for water, sewer, electrical?
Yeah, any any utilities would be maintained. We're not planning on building across, I don't believe, the vacated right-of-way, but that would also be a question for the applicant in case there is something in the future. But the building itself is to the immediately to the west of the existing right-of-way.
Right. And the idea is that so they had bought that property to the west for their large expansion.
Correct.
And for this roadway, it would be going right through the middle of their building, basically.
Correct.
So for them to be able to build the building they want, they need this vacated. Another question would be, if we don't come to an agreement and they don't ever decide to build the building there, they would still own this right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Would the applicant like to say anything else?
We'll see you soon.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on.
I'll be calling item six B, C, and D together. They are all related. Annexation two zero zero nine, application of Lincoln Federal Bank Corp., Inc. to annex approximately sixty-one acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of South Forty-Third Street and Rookerby Road. And the related change of zone two zero zero one seven, application of Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. from A.G. Agricultural District to R three P.U.D. Residential District, planned unit development for up to five hundred and six dwelling units and one hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial floor area with associated adjustments. And the approving the amendment of number one to settlement agreement between the City of Lincoln, Federal Bank Corp., Inc., Wilderness Commons LLC, and Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to relocate crossings and trails between South Twenty-seventh and Forty-Third Streets.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. Brad Marshall with Olson on behalf of Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. Address is six hundred P Street, six oh one P Street, Suite two hundred. So I'm here before you this evening to talk about the annexation, change of zone, and amendment to the settlement agreement. A little bit of background, if I will, hopefully give you a little help here. The preliminary plat back in two thousand and six for the Wilderness Hills subdivision. It was a preliminary plat, it was zoned R three, and it did include a good size section along Rookerby Road as a majority of the application for the change of zone annexation. This area was designated to be identified later with specifics and details of site planning in the future, and it has sat until this time. Where we have come forward with a development plan now, a couple of things have probably changed. A couple of months ago, we were before you as part of the annexation agreement for Iron Ridge across the way, that included the neighboring properties with Mr. Sampson and Mr. Cat and for the improvements and getting some Lincoln on the Move funds for the improvements to Rookerby. And Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. decided to move forward with the applications for this property as well. As part of the overall preliminary plat, there was also a settlement agreement. I don't really care for that term, but that's what it was. Basically, it set up an agreement with the city with a couple of different parameters. A lot of it was conservation easement that was also dedicated in flood-prone areas. Back in two thousand and six, they didn't have flood plain actually designated, so the city and N.R.D. protected those areas that were flood-prone and actually purchase easement. And the agreement also set up some different parameters, which I'll touch base as far as what is being amended in it. So what is shown here is the development plan. It is an R three P.U.D., and one of the questions that came out of planning was why R three? You're not showing much for any R three. The intent here was to show, there's sixty-one acres, and maybe half of that is actually in the conservation easement. And that conservation easement pushes towards a lot of the R three that is designated, single-family homes and Wilderness Hills and actually Wilderness Commons as well to the north. And so we elected to keep that as a buffer zone between the existing preliminary plat up there and the plat, the properties that are developing up there. So there are then B two and B, excuse me, R five areas. This map may help differentiate that. The yellow color is the R five, we're designated as multifamily, and the orange colors, red maybe showing up on the screen here, are the B two type uses. Most of them are adjacent to Rookerby Road, and we've worked with Planning Department and staff to designate the particular areas and accesses to those properties. As part of the overall plan, the settlement agreement identified a park that designated a purchase agreement between Parks and Rec, the city, and Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. The park was designated along Rookerby Road. It was it was shown along Rookerby Road, it was just over three acres in size, and it was the intent to be shared between developments, Wilderness Hills to the north and whatever would develop to the south. When we came forward with this application, Parks and Rec took the opportunity to come forward to Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. with a proposal to change the location. And some of the things we've been working through, this has probably been a process just over a year at least, that we've been talking to neighbors and HOAs about some of the changes down here, was that they want a more centrally-located park. I think Parks heard some of that and said, would Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. be interested in changing the location of the park? And so they were, and that is part of the change in the settlement agreement. And so up here, there is a there's an LPS property that has now been identified, and it's been in the preliminary plat for a long time, and the park would be co-located with LPS facilities up there. And then Lincoln Federal has then designated that park space along Rookerby to be a B two area that has those designated type of commercial type uses. This is a little bit zoomed-in section of that park property. They are taking three lots that are were designated as single-family lots and then trading that to Lincoln Parks. And as you can see, this is just a concept, and this is not one of the current elementary sites in the Bondiscu, but with the growth in this particular area, it may be on the next one. Another part of this plan has been a request to eliminate a public roadway that was previously identified in the preliminary plat for Wilderness Hills. Thirty-fourth Street was a connection on Rookerby Road that would have connected going through the conservation easement and connecting into Wilderness Hills. We identified that road and and the increased costs, and this was even eighteen months ago when we started having these discussions, but it's one of those areas that we like to talk about the infrastructure that it's going to take and drainage crosses, not only the cost now to actually put that in place, but then for the city to inherit that, maintain, and then replace in the future. The city supported the proposal to eliminate it. With that proposal, we came to an agreement to provide trail and connections to the Cabot Trail that is currently built all the way down to Yankee Hill Road, and then it will be built someday through Wilderness Hills. And so so Lincoln Federal agreed to build a pedestrian trail, build the structures that will have to cross the drainageways, and make that connection when that trail is built into the future. Councilwoman Washington, I think, asked me at one of our previous meetings about trails in this area and some of the discussions that have been going on down there. This is this is a map that is actually included in the agreement, the amendment to the agreement. The green line is showing the Cabot Trail, if you will, those will be built by the city. And this identifies then what the responsibilities of the developer and the city that will actually construct these connectors. So you can see here Trail B that goes from what is approved for single-family homes, that's the trail connector that residents up there may be able to utilize and connect to the Cabot Trail shown in green. The developer will also install a trail that will connect then to Wilderness Hills South P.U.D. There's a couple of other crossings that predated back to the original agreement and then clarified roles and responsibilities. Crossing A was a crossing that the city would have had to build as part of the trail, and that was identified and given the responsibility of the city. And then Crossing B, through the negotiations years and years ago, was an added trail crossing to the drainageway. And so that was actually designated then as the responsibility of Wilderness Hills, excuse me, somebody Wilderness says, planning complains about it, and I usually don't get tongue-tied on it, but Wilderness Commons to the north. So that is Crossing B, and they would actually build that crossing. And there are some triggers within the agreement that would require that crossing to be constructed upon some of the development, that development. So we took the opportunity to take that agreement and clarify some of these points and timing as part of the the agreement to help better understand that between everybody. And then, as I mentioned, the previous agreement for this particular area, Rookerby Road improvements, I just have that shown on there. I will mention, I kind of skipped over really quickly, we are asking for a couple of waivers within that development. Height waiver within the R five area, which is pretty common for multifamily. The waiver is being asked for a height of thirty-five feet to fifty-five feet. And then also some setback changes, so waiving the internal setbacks to zero except where parking would, parking lots are adjacent to the multifamily areas, and then anywhere that we actually have adjacency to that conservation easement, we ask for a reduction setback there. So lastly, lastly, last thing I'll have, there is a motion to amend before you, and I'll give you this a little bit of background. In the settlement agreement, there is, let me find a better map. I kind of refer to this as the island lot, if you will, but over on Forty-First Street, there is a parcel of property that was originally in the preliminary plat for Wilderness Hills. That was, in the settlement agreement, granted access to that property with some low-traffic designations to that property, ten trips a day, which would be very common for a single-family home, or I thought maybe that was a really good place for a cell tower to land, where you have maintenance crews visiting the site periodically. That property, and as part of this motion to amend, we're expanding on this and taking care of it into the P.U.D. so that this can be reflected within that document as opposed to the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement actually eliminates that language in there for access to that property. We have discussed with staff, we do have their support on this with L.T.U. They do and have added that kind of second section where access management policy would say if you change the use from anything that's R three, let's say you wanted to do something that was more characteristic with the B two type uses within this P.U.D., then you'd have to add turn lanes and add additional safety measures for the increased capacity to that site. So that is in here, and we are fully agreeable to those conditions. So with that, I'd be happy to wrap that up and answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Marshall?
Well, you know what?
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marshall, I've got a questions in three areas. I'll try and make them brief. First, on the parklands. You described the parklands in the earlier agreement as being three plus some change acres, and they were in what was zoned B two along Rookerby. And now you said they, the new agreement has moved them up next to the school, which is a great idea, and instead of it being three acres, it's three lots.
It is, yeah.
Can you tell me what the size of the parklands now are?
They're they're approximately probably quarter-size acre lots, so about three-quarters acre. Now, to clarify a little bit why you go from three acres to three-quarter acres and why there's a one-to-one value on something like that, a lot of the land that was in that three acres was flood plain, so they couldn't build anything that would have been structures on that. They would have had to actually put like the play equipment or basketball courts, they would have actually put that right up against Rookerby Road. And a lot of that other area would have been just green spaces, a ball field or something that could have been located in that flood plain. So I think they took that into consideration, that the devalue of that land where it's flood plain and not usable land as opposed to adjacent to a school, that that was more for value for their trade.
Okay. I can understand flood plain usage, I totally get that for parks. And so now the the park itself is going to feel more like a pocket park, but it's going to be up against school grounds that don't yet exist.
Mm-hmm.
All right, it seems like a fair trade. And I was going to ask a question about parklands being in flood plains, so I don't have to ask that question. I will ask some questions about the trails. Thank you for remembering that I have an interest in trails. So the trail connector being built by the developer, or being built by the bank.
Mm-hmm.
I think you called it C. It looked like in the plans that it was five feet wide, which is very narrow for a bicycle trail. I think our best practices are we're building trails no more narrow than eight to ten feet, and often when we expect them to be multi-use and two-directional, we're building them closer to twelve feet wide, ten to twelve feet wide. I'm curious why five-foot was the width chosen, because it feels like there's the, that's when you get people like riding off the trail, and so you end up having a wider trail, only some of it's paved, the other part of it is dirt and mud. And so going through a flood plain area, that's not necessarily wise, you just increase erosion. So if you could tell me why they settled on five-foot width, and is that a definite non-negotiable width?
I can't answer that. So these are these are tried to be color-coded here. So from the from the residential development Wilderness Hills, this is the eighth addition up here, and there will be a connector. So at some point in the future, I'll probably be back here, we'll be talking about vacation of right-of-way so that we can complete that connector out of the development appropriately. But that is a blue area, it's designated as Trail B. So Trail B is actually eight feet wide.
Okay.
That was a request by Parks and Rec and made a whole lot of sense. You're probably going to have a lot higher foot traffic and pedestrian volume through there that we're going to, you know, there's the there's the Cabot Trail, and we're going to be wanting to come down there, so that is actually designated as eight-foot, and then we come to some standards for trail designations for like the drainageway crossing where you actually have to have like ten feet and some clearances and so forth. So we have worked with Parks to hear what they would have, what they wanted there, and hopefully we met those conditions.
Okay. But C?
C, yes. C going up to the commercial area, again, it is five feet, you're absolutely right. It's five feet, thinking that there probably wouldn't be as much of volume through that, that would be, and I believe, then maintained by the developer too. So that was that was a significant difference between the two. Trail B and of course the Cabot would be done by the city, and then the developer would then take over the responsibility, probably within association for the area of change of zone today, to take on the responsibility of that five-foot walk.
Okay. That would make sense if it being maintaining some narrow, except for the fact that you have V five, yeah, I'm sorry, you have R five.
Mm-hmm.
You're looking for a height waiver, which means you're looking for additional stories for density, and I'm going to assume the people who are living in those apartments are going to want to reach the trail as well, and if the commercial area is adjacent to that has any kind of services, that would be interesting. I would say that your traffic is going to be just as much as it is in the other direction. So I'd like you guys to rethink that, if it stays the way it is because you know that you're not going to have a service there, that people want to frequent?
So I will say that we did ask about other connectivity from the apartment complex.
Yeah.
Those aren't specific. We didn't want to designate it's going to be here or here.
Okay.
But we were told that we could, as the trail comes across the drainageway and we have apartments up here, that it may make sense to make a forty-foot connector to that trail to have a direct access point for that multifamily. So we were told that those possibilities would exist, and I would, I think, there's nothing in here that says they have to do it by any means, but we are seeing more from a site pedestrian circulation perspective, we're seeing, especially in multifamily, to have more connectivity. They see it as amenity.
Right.
And so I could see that very likely that they would want to connect to that trail.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, setbacks. I have one last question. In the R five, you want to reduce setbacks to zero next to the conservation area?
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Ten feet on the north.
Can you tell me what the what's going to be, what's that ten-foot look like, or the eleven-foot? Tell me what it looks like at eleven. Is that the back of a building? Is that like patio space or?
Yep. It would just be a building structure. If the pad patio or you actually had like decks overhanging from that building, then that's where that that setback would begin.
Okay.
If you had an on-grade patio, it would not.
Okay. So that is actually designated as eight foot and then we come to some standards for trail designations for like the drainage way crossing where you actually have to have like ten feet and some clearances and so forth. So we have worked with parks to hear what they would have, what they wanted there and hopefully we met those conditions.
Okay, but C?
C, yes. C going up to the commercial area, again, it is five feet, you're absolutely right. It's five feet, thinking that there probably wouldn't be as much of volume through that, that would be, and I believe, then maintained by the developer too. So that was, that was a significant difference between the two. Trail B and of course the caveat would be done by the city and then the developer would then take over the responsibility, probably within association for the area of change of zone today, to take on the responsibility of that five-foot walk.
Okay, that would make sense if, if it being maintaining some narrow, except for the fact that you have V five, oh yeah, I'm sorry, you have R five. You're looking for a height waiver, which means you're looking for additional stories for density. And I'm going to assume the people who are living in those apartments are going to want to reach the trail as well. And if the commercial area is adjacent to that has any kind of services, that would be interesting. I would say that your traffic is going to be just as much as it is in the other direction. So I'd like you guys to rethink that. If it stays the way it is, because you know that you're not going to have a service there that people want to frequent?
So I will say that we did ask about other connectivity from the apartment complex.
Yeah.
Those aren't specific. We didn't want to designate it's going to be here or here.
Okay.
But we were told that we could, as the trail comes across the drainage way and we have apartments up here, that it may make sense to make a forty-foot connector to that trail to have a direct access point for that multifamily. So we were told that now those possibilities would exist and I would, I, I think, there's nothing in here that says they have to do it by any means, but we are seeing more from a site pedestrian circulation perspective, we're seeing especially in multifamily to have more connectivity. They see it as amenity.
Right.
And so I could see that very likely that they would want to connect to that trail.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, setbacks. I have one last question in the R five.
Mm-hmm.
You want to reduce setbacks to zero next to the conservation area?
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Ten feet on the north.
Can you tell me what the, what, what's going to be, what's that ten foot look like or the eleven foot? Tell me what it looks like at eleven. Is that the back of a building? Is that like patio space or?
Yep, it would just be a building structure. If the pad patio or you actually had like decks overhanging from that building, then that's where that, that setback would begin.
Okay.
If you had an on-grade patio, it would not.
Okay. And so you won't put snow removal there? You're not going to push up?
No, I don't believe so. No, that probably would not be an option over there.
Yeah, I'm thinking of.
And I will mention the parks discussion. One of the, one of the great things, my opinion, about this is that the donation then also from Lincoln Federal is a cash donation. So basically they, they would not collect on that payment for that land. So that was going to be paid by impact fees. Those impact fees then can go forward now to go pay for that park equipment on a much accelerated schedule now.
That's good news.
So where, so in talking to Sarah Hartzell, this trail is probably four or five within their, their, the comp plan of following the growth, that probably puts it for, let's say five to seven years, I think she said. Well, it's not going to happen next year, but it, but this would probably bring that up and then they would have the dedicated funds as opposed to using impact fees and going by the land, they can take those impact fees and go buy the equipment and have that actually started much, much sooner and have that equipment available for the residents up there.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Marshall? Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Brad, thank you very much. I have a question, you know, backing up the history of that Thirty-Fourth Street even more. I know some of the neighbors were disappointed. Can you talk about why they were disappointed about the lack of connectivity on Thirty-Fourth Street?
I think through a couple of meetings with them, right now, a lot of it has to do with the way that the development has actually been built out. And so basically started developing from Twenty-seventh and working its way east, it's kind of gotten to a point now. And the eastern edge of that is a major thoroughfare right now. So construction vehicles getting to the south side have no connectivity, they can't access from Rokeby. And so I think it's Thirty-second Street, that street is used really heavily right now. As, as the development moves forward and it gets connectivity made, then I think those, that traffic pressure will actually be relieved. So this, this is a big picture view of the square mile. And so everything west of here is basically built. This area was before you a while back and that connectivity to Rokeby is just now under construction. But up until now, they had points of access that were fairly limited within the development. And anybody getting to the last development piece, the blue area, has to utilize basically one of these roads to get in and out. And so people living on that corridor have seen a lot of traffic because it's the only way in and out. The future phases will help to relieve that. There's, there's current plans to finish Wilderness Hills Boulevard to make that connection so that there, there's a connector all the way through. The light area around the school property is actually under design and will be, it's planned for construction next year. So where you have lots being developed and now people starting to come in and, and live in those homes, they will actually have some other points of relief to, to access in the future. But I think that was the main concern is if we're getting rid of Thirty-Fourth, then there will be no access in and out of this property. People will continue to use Thirty-second Street and Wilderness Hills and that on a daily basis, that's just higher volume than it was anticipated.
So it seemed like in previous drawings, there was Thirty-Fourth Street connection. So what changed?
In what, sorry?
It seemed like, oh, sorry, it seemed like before in the earlier drawings, there was that connection on Thirty-Fourth Street in the plans.
In two thousand and six, there was, yep. And then we actually did a amendment in two thousand and eighteen. We, we left it, but that's when that, that discussion actually started with the city about eliminating it, a meeting with the HOAs and residents about the elimination, kind of the entire package that's really before you today. The connect, the change in the parks, the connector, the trails, the elimination of Thirty-Fourth. We, honestly, we probably heard more about Thirty-Fourth than, than anything from those, those people that are there. One differentiator was we were just building that blue area and as people started, starting over the last year, starting moving in there, those are the people that I kind of expected to hear more objection, I guess, from not having Thirty-Fourth because they're right there. It's quite, quite the opposite that I, that the feedback that I got. They're actually the furthest away from any type of connector to an arterial roadway, but they, they, they were kind of the opposite. That's going to bring traffic to us. And so you're going to have traffic through on some of your major corridors within the development. I do think that they are going to start being relieved once these new streets are, are built. Traffic will start generating out to the east and into the north as opposed to being utilized really heavily. And I will tell you, I, I think most of it was really about Thirty-second Street. It was that one north-south drive street.
And then going back to Councilwoman Washington's concern about the width of Trail C, I guess I'm not sure, is that an amendment we need to make with this plan to change it from five feet to eight feet so it does match Trail B? Because it does seem like it would have greater access with multifamily right there as well.
If that were to, if that were to come to mind for the council to change that width, I don't think Tim C. is here, but this is one component that's in the settlement agreement that had to go to the N R D. Board and have N R D. Board approval and that's one of the delays that we've had up to this point to get here. I'm assuming that change would probably have to
We go.
Have to go back.
David, David Carey, Director of Plan. I don't want to pretend that I'm an attorney and understand all the ins and outs of the settlement agreement, but I think to answer your question, Jane, it is, that segment is not part of the trail system, I guess is what I would explain, and that is why it is a five-foot, standard five-foot sidewalk. It meets the ADA requirements, things like that, but it isn't a part of the trail system. It is a connector to the trail system for sure. And it's a really good idea. We're very happy to have it in there and I do agree with what Brad said is that another one in the future potentially would be helpful further to the east. But we got to this point with the settlement agreement and the state that it's in, we feel that it's in a good, in good shape, that the five-foot connector within the commercial area makes sense and actually will, will get high utilization, but can function well as a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one quick one. You talking about your new, uh, motion to amend, right?
Yes.
Which will be brought forward at the time of voting for that little piece of parcel. How big is that parcel over there? That's out of the floodplain?
It's not very big.
And you were talking about putting up a cell tower on that site? If you do, how big are cell towers?
How big are they?
Yeah, how tall are they? Hundred, hundred and fifty?
In height? There, there were probably, I, I'm actually not sure if, I think we might even have to come back forward with a cell tower.
My question is they need a fall zone and there's a high-powered line going through there?
There is, yes.
So we would guarantee it wouldn't fall onto the line or?
There are, there are.
Ways to mitigate that, I guess?
So that goes back to the original agreement. There was a cell tower on the Wilderness Commons Development just to the north and the thought process was that that could be then moved. They actually moved down to Colloke on L E S. Property.
On South Forty.
On South Forty.
South Rokeby.
Yep, and so that's kind of gone and the language really has just been carried forward, if you will. It still would work. I have my, my doubts, I guess, about actually cell towers and the increased, you know, technology and going to 5G where you don't have towers, you know, you're utilizing street pole lights and everything from there. I don't know how realistic it is. We did not remove it from the agreement.
Okay.
The, I think the important thing is that we're designating trips to this now. So ten trips is the, the limit without a driveway, with, with just a driveway, I should say, to an arterial roadway. And if we were to change that and go above it and change the use, we'd have to include a right-turn lane. I think that was L T U.'s sole concern.
Yeah, they didn't want access left-in, left-out. They only want to right-in, right-out on there because that's going to be a major road. My other quick question then would be, you keep saying that Rokeby Road, once it gets rebuilt, there won't be any trail along Rokeby Road.
So I, like Parks Trail?
Yeah, or sidewalks or trail for, you know, again, for them to connect down on to Rokeby Road from Wilderness Hills.
The trail would continue
Along the road.
Across Rokeby from where it actually connects and, and progress south, I suppose.
Okay.
But there would be normal sidewalks and everything associated with Rokeby.
So we can only, so the five-foot would stay five-foot even though that could become a regular trail on the private property? Because it would connect to a trail down there? I just see that as a great connection into the neighborhood off of Rokeby Road.
So.
By trail.
Just to clarify, so what Brad was referring to is the trail system plan is not that same location where the commercial is that we're talking about tonight. It's further over to the west where it crosses Rokeby. So that would be a full-size trail that would go further south.
Okay.
Could you just, for clarification, could you shift that map, that color, that beautiful color-coded map?
That's what I'm going for.
Oh, perfect, even better, the trail map.
I think that's what Richard is asking.
Yes.
The, the ten-foot trail, the ten-foot in green would progress all the way down to
Oh, it would shift over to the east. So if you were going west, okay, or east, if you were going west, you're trying to access.
The intent and alignment of that trail is to follow the conservation easement.
Any other questions? Anybody else like to come forward on this item? Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to read? Okay. We're going to get punchy here. Okay, call the next item.
That ends our public hearing, ordinances, second reading and related resolutions.
Okay, you can take your mask off if you're going to start reading them.
We can now move to our ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. Item seven A is approving a second amendment to lease agreement between the city and Experian for the lease of approximately thirty thousand square feet of office space in the building located at nine four nine West Bond Street for a period of six months with the option to renew for additional six months terms, not to exceed a total of five years, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second by Councilperson Christensen. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest on seven B. and I filed paperwork with the state. Thank you.
I'll let you back in.
All right, could we please read the next item?
Item seven B is change of zone two one seven nine K, application of community action partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties on behalf of three A P dash five two and R LLC for a change from I two industrial park district to H two highway business district on property generally located at five two zero one R. Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we please do a roll call vote?
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero.
All right, can we recall back our council chair?
Where'd he go?
I think he's.
I know.
Handing it back over.
Thank you, sir. Please call item seven C.
Item seven C is change of zone one two zero one eight B, application of Stallion Ventures LLC to amend the Holdridge Auto Wild redevelopment, planned unit development by adding fraternities and sororities as a group living use and allowing signage per the B one zoning requirements on property generally located at three five three five Holdridge Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item seven D is approving amendment number one to real estate purchase agreement between the city and T N N G. Capital LLC for property located at the northeast corner of Twenty-seventh and Old Cheney Road, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item seven D is approving amendment number one to real estate purchase agreement between the city and T N N G. Capital LLC for property located at the northeast corner of Twenty-seventh and Old Cheney Road, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item seven E is change of zone two zero zero two six, application of T N N G. Capital LLC for a change from P. Public Use District to O three Office Park District on property generally located at five six zero zero South Twenty-seventh Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item seven F is use permit two zero zero one zero, application of T N N G. Capital LLC to allow for healthcare facility with associated waivers to reduce the side yard setback, front yard setback and reduce required parking on property generally located at fifty-six hundred South Twenty-seventh Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item seven G is amending chapter ten point one four of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to rules of the road by amending section ten point one four point two five zero, speed regulated, or repealing section ten point one four point two six zero, arterials adjacent to schools, reduce speed in its entirety, and by amending section ten point one four two six five, passing and school crossing zone. Penalties to remain consistent with school zone standards and repealing sections ten point one four point two five zero and ten point one four two six five as heretofore existing, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
I was expecting another.
Item 7H is amending Section 10.02.315 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to school crossing zone to remain consistent with school zone standards and repealing Section 10.02.315 as heretofore existing, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Our resolutions, first reading, Section 8 is Items 8A through 8N. Ordinance's first reading and related resolution, Section 9 is Items 9A and 9B. Section 10 is our pending list, Items 10A and 10D.
Okay. At this point, we'll have our open mic. So anyone wishing, you want to, I'll announce it, anyone wishing to address the council on a, on a matter not on this agenda or plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this session. Individuals are allowed for a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. And tonight will be your open mic. Yes.
My name is Samuel Lyon. I'm a lifelong Lincoln resident. What I came here to say to you today will have to wait until next week. Because I was so moved by what I witnessed today regarding Mr. Podany's $115 claim with the city that was denied. Mr. Podany's door was broken by LPD while he was out of town.
Hey, I'm sorry, you can't speak on that item.
Was there a, was there a, was there a public hearing for this item?
Yes.
It was not offered to us in the public.
Yes, it was.
You, you asked for other speakers?
Yes.
And then you said, we will move to motion.
Guys, we're claiming to listen, let me speak.
You're out of order, sir.
After Mr. Podany, after Mr. Podany spoke, you did not offer again for public to speak into it. You asked if there were other questions for Mr. Podany, but you did not offer me another option, an opportunity to speak into it.
I believe I did, but.
You did, after Mr. Podany spoke, you had questions for the chief, you had questions for the attorney.
I asked if anybody else had any, would like to come forward.
Any questions? You said questions. If anyone else had any questions, is what you said. You did not say or comment because I was waiting, I was waiting, that, that, that was my opportunity and I was waiting for it, so I was listening. Are you saying I'm not allowed to speak on this motion, or?
How do my other council members feel on this?
We don't typically, I'm talking and thinking at the same time. We don't typically allow an item on agenda to be on open public comment if it's been on the agenda. You're bringing us a situation that I've not seen before.
And I can only add that that has been the standing rule, and when there's new impending claims, anyone may come forward and discuss any new impending claim. So that was the opportunity to have the, the public make comments on the new impending claims or pending and denied claims.
Councilwoman Raybold, could you tell me when was my opportunity to speak? Was it before Mr. Podany or after Mr. Podany? Before the chief spoke or after the chief spoke?
I believe it was, it was after the chief spoke, after Mr. Podany spoke, and then I, I thought Richard said, is there anyone else that wants to speak on these matters?
It could have been before he spoke, too.
I mentioned it at the very beginning, anyone wishing to come forward to speak on these items could.
You, you said that at the beginning.
Yes, so you had a chance to speak to any of those items at that time.
Yes, and so I formed my, my comments after Mr. Podany, Mr. Podany spoke. So it would be impossible for me to speak about his subject before he spoke on it. After he got done speaking, you had questions for the chief. I did not feel that was appropriate for me to jump in front of the chief as you had questions. And you had questions for the city attorney as well, which again, I don't feel is appropriate for me to jump in front of them. I waited for my turn, but then when they finished, still at the diocese, you said, are there any other questions for them? And then you said, let's vote on the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also recall as my colleagues that he always asked for other comments. Is there anyone else that has any other comments on this matter? So my recollection is the same as Councilwoman Raybold's and Councilwoman Washington's, so I'm sorry.
Respectfully, that could be a recollection, but it is wrong.
Well, I'm sorry, but I think your recollection is also.
Pardon me?
The chair is in charge of the meeting.
And I will say that I believe I had asked for people to come forward and comment on these questions. Now, just because someone else spoke ahead of you doesn't mean you get to come back up or would have been able to come back up and rebut somebody else's testimony.
I was planning on adding to Mr. Podany's testimony.
I apologize if that's the way it came across or that, but I wish you would have made some type of, because I asked for other.
Questions for the, for the chief?
You're right, I did ask for other questions for the chief and such, but at the very beginning, I asked, who would like to come forward? And you could have came up at that time.
The matter is actually settled, and if his purpose to comment is to criticize the council, he can do that on his own time outside this meeting with any single one of us.
So I'm going to, I am going to rattle this out of order.
Very well. I have another subject that I will speak on, the original subject that I had planned on, and, and it fits into the current narrative, unfortunately. Again, my name is Samuel Lyon. I am a lifelong Lincoln resident. I was born and raised in Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm here to talk to you about the city council meeting that occurred on August 17th, 2020. It was on that meeting that I watched something extremely concerning to me as a citizen of Lincoln, something disheartening and flat-out wrong, something similar to what has just happened. That meeting may be more familiar to you as the Pat Lopez confirmation meeting. It started off innocently enough with the mayor respectfully requesting your consent to her appointment for Lancaster County Health Director. Just quote, just a formal acknowledgement of the role she's been playing, end quote. What she didn't mention was that she was privately pressuring you to confirm her nominee in one day, something that is prohibited by the rules of city charter. Yet indeed, she had her thumb on you to confirm in one meeting anyway. How do we know this? Because when she left, the city attorney was asked by Councilman Christensen, what's the rush? Quote, why is it important that we suspend the rules instead of wait till next week for hearing and vote? End quote. Why are you asking us to suspend the rules in order to push this through in one day? And the city attorney testified that, quote, I think that probably, most importantly, I think that the mayor and Ms. Lopez have agreed that she will serve as the health director permanently. Did you hear that all right? The most important reason given to you for why you should suspend rules was not because there's an emergency, was not because there's no one at the wheel, it was simply because the mayor has already decided this is what's going to happen. So did you shut it down? No. You voted for it to continue anyway. Then came those in support of the nomination. One man in support of Pat Lopez. She's done a very good, fine job, he said, as part of his short testimony. I support your actions. But there were many in the crowd who, even though generally there would be no hearing on this day, sensed that there could be some shenanigans by some on the council. And in fact, shenanigans are what ensued. And so 12 people testified passionately, respectfully, in opposition to the nomination. But also specifically in opposition to the fact that you would suspend your own rules in order to silence others who, like them, needed to have their voice heard about the nomination. Was that enough to sway your actions? No. You continued with no regard for their testimony. One of them presented you with a petition of 250 names of those requesting to testify before you at the next meeting, as is required by law in, in the city charter, for a resolution of this kind. Was that enough to sway your action? Again, sadly, no. You chose to disregard the voice of the people. Does such callousness, such disrespect for those who you have sworn to serve, happen overnight? No. It is a pattern of behavior that this council has continued to exhibit, just like today. Like when you turn out, when, when, when people turn out for a topic exceeds your threshold, you reduce the amount of time given to each voice. When you see signs here that say something you don't like, you make laws prohibiting those signs. And now, on that day, you came to the place where you put away even the perception of regard for those who you represent by canceling an entire meeting opportunity guaranteed to citizens by Lincoln Charter rules. Today, I'm going to give you the opportunity, right now, to acknowledge the mistake that you made on August 17th. After you've had time to consider the terrible thing the mayor demanded of you, the unfair position that she put you in, after reflection on your actions that day, would any of you raise your hand right now and say that what happened on that day was a mistake? It was wrong, and that I should not have been a part of allowing that injustice to be forced on those I represent? Would any of you do that?
One minute.
Answer it.
Would any of you say we should not have done that? That was a mistake? Not one. Very well. On August 17th, you made your choice, and today, you made it again. You thought you were done with what happened on that day. Well, I'm here to tell you, you are not done. This is not over. Because when you forget that you serve at the pleasure of the people, it is the people's responsibility, their duty, and their right to remind you of that fact.
Thank you.
I'm, uh.
Okay, anybody else would like to come forward to speak tonight?
Ellie Sampson. I'm also going to speak about what Sam spoke today. The last time I was here was August 17th. That is a meeting I would hope is remembered by each of you for the remainder of your time as council members. However, the political theater that occurred that day made me realize you don't care to remember and must therefore be reminded of it as often as is necessary until we, the people, are once again the rightful governors of this city. On August 17th, a group of 20-plus Lincolnites attended the council meeting with the sole purpose of protesting the rural suspension approval of Pat Lopez. We were opposed to her for various reasons, the most egregious of which being that while operating in her position unlawfully, she had been using directed health measures that at best infringed upon and at worst removed individuals' rights to choose our own medical care while simultaneously requiring small business owners to enforce said infringements. For the record, Ms. Lopez is still issuing those unconstitutional measures, and we'll see her day in court, along with Ms. Baird, to answer for their criminal overreach. Back to August 17th, and Jane, 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 Masked Cole Jane, before the meeting even had a chance to get started, you took it upon yourself to demand that we, the people, comply and obey. By masking ourselves, you even went so far as to call for a recess until we did so. Just curious, Jane, how did it feel to be told you must end your tantrum because it was about to cost the city a hefty lawsuit? I hope it felt like the slap to the face that you deserved for all your virtue signaling bravado. But I'm thinking it didn't since because instead of returning to the meeting and proceeding like an adult, you chose to then change direction slightly and demand we comply and obey by social distancing from each other. We, the people, don't like to be told what to do, Jane, especially by the people who are supposed to be representing our wishes. Our rights are unalienable, and they come from God alone. That's a lesson you will learn one way or another because we're done watching from the sidelines. If Jane's misdeeds had been the only ones encountered at that meeting, they would have been enough. However, each of you council members violated the rights and trust of the citizens you're meant to be representing. That's right, you're meant to be serving us, not the mayor, not the governor, not the president, us. But instead of recognizing the rightful place of we, the people, Sandra, you chose to label us as test subjects for Ms. Lopez in your sing-songy Pied Piper voice you tried to explain to us. And when I say us, I mean those I can only assume you view as unintelligent peasants, not trained in science, that sometimes, in science, you have to try things to see if they work. You used that tenet of the scientific method as justification for the health measures. In other words, you said, we have to see if removing your freedom to choose your own health services and course of care will work. But you never said a parameter for what work actually looks like. Not that any parameter justifies violation of our unalienable constitutionally protected rights, but not even giving the appearance that the freedoms would be returned when a benchmark was met, you showed your whole hand. This was never about health. If it was, the people would be free to choose. It has always only been about compliance and obedience, and we, the people, now see that clearly. In conclusion, not a single one of you should feel secure in the seats you currently hold because we, the people, have had enough and we are done with all of you.
One minute.
Thank you.
Hi, Hero.
Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak tonight?
Room last.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, there is enough to be any applauding in the audience. We have new rules for the chamber, so.
I'll go.
Okay.
Let me start with listing some names of some good people.
You gave us your name, I'm sorry.
Jimmy Light.
Okay.
Fight the Good Fight. I live at 1021 Coachman's Drive, 402-890-5462. I want to start by getting some names of some, of my heroes, and that I have a witness come up here. Jason Whitmer. Robert. Um, let's see. I don't even need it really. I wrote a little poem for you guys. I don't know if any of you can answer what the effects of systemic inequalities, what that produces, the fruits of that. But it produces one side not aware that the other side has problems. It's a very easy, a very divisive tool. Instigators in the middle can poke fun at both sides, both people. It's a common tactic used from people in power, sectionalists, like John Herms stated, and he smashed when he came up here. That was beautiful. He called all y'all out. And he did not waste a single moment. He said, are you guys pretending on this theatrical stage? Or not? And he said, he brought to the light that if you enlighten the public generally, what was it? Then evil spirits of tyranny will dissipate at the dawn of the day. And not a second later did the alleged crooks or the constitutional perverts, not a second did they waste in bringing, uh, not a second did they waste in, in coming forward and showing their face. I had, I had a chance to speak with Andrew Kristen because I feel we all have to share the same space, all of you up here. You know, you're human beings. And I don't believe in bashing any of y'all. But it's apparent we've lost sight of the true values that Nebraska and Lincoln instills in its children. The apple does not fall far from the tree. If we were to pick up that apple and go bury it somewhere else, it would still be an apple In this life, we take with us the lessons we learn. Unfortunately for y'all, there won't be a second term. We tried to play nice, we tried to play fair, we beat you at your own game, organized a passing petition and watched it poof into thin air. Our children are getting tear gassed in the streets. Our dinner table has nothing good to eat. I see family members dying while they're packing meat. And in the meantime, we're fed boneless chicken wings. Councilman Christensen and his seed are 100% unfit to lead. We chant for justice, peace, and aid. We chant for justice, peace, and aid. And what do we get from you? We get our signs stripped from the room. And the one made in your likeness just wants to mock us and make us look like the fool.
One minute.
We hear your message loud and clear. You cannot hide your ill intentions from our ears. There's nowhere for you to run, and you cannot escape. Consider this a fair warning shot to anyone who wants to be saved. Ross Tafari is the new race. Just because you didn't vote our way doesn't mean we don't think you didn't hear what we had to say. We know you blatantly ignored us. Dear council servants, you do not own this circus. A clown with a pie to the face holds more value or worth than any boneless chicken wing fake branch that you can give us. I'm I and I are lying, and the world is my cage. Ross Tafari is my mic, and Lincoln is my stage. Any boneless leader that wants to step up, prepare to get ate.
Can you wrap it up?
Just because you make an ordinance doesn't mean it's a law.
Sir, can you wrap it up? Your five minutes is up. If you want to submit it
When you have a
at a later time, you can.
All right, one more thing. The American is dying out. He or she is going to die faster and more rapidly in the next eighty-eight years than he or she has in the last three hundred. There's only one thing to save the American, and that is the immediate realization of his own responsibilities. Unfortunately, we are the most careless and indifferent people in the world. We are shiftless and irresponsible. And that is why we find ourselves the wards of an inherited materialism.
Can you finish this now? You've gone way over your time.
That has lost its soul and its conscience. It is strange to hear an American leader speaking in strain as the usual course is flattery. But I would not flatter you to save my own life.
Sir.
And even of my own family. There is no value in flattery.
Please finish up.
Flattery of the American and the titles of nobility for another month will mean hell and damnation to the sacred land and its inhabitants. How can any American leader flatter us about progress?
Can you stop, please? You've gone way over your five minutes. Please, sir. Otherwise.
And the rest of it, when the world is preparing.
Sir.
Sir.
Point of order.
You are civil servants. For the lack of a better word, civil dogs.
You've, uh,
And you want to kick
Way more than your time, please. Would you just wrap it up?
All right, I'll wrap it up for you.
In the next fifteen seconds?
How can I flatter you about progress when the world is preparing more than ever to bury us in its entirety?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Must I flatter you
Plenty.
when greed and hate
Of time.
are all concentrating their efforts on robbing every square inch
Of recess.
of American territory?
I move adjournment.
The land of our fathers.
Sure, no.
Must I flatter you
Be, right.
when the cry is being loudly raised for all people
We'll stand adjourned, please.
to prepare for the struggle of survival?
Stand adjourned, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Gretchen Hess. I'm going to add my voice today to the first two speakers. I come before you, again, to share my thoughts and my feelings. But today I come with a request. I believe it's a simple one, one that doesn't seem like it's important anymore, though, however. Or it doesn't seem like it holds value or that it's utilized very often. I'm asking today that you please, for the time that people are here, listen. I feel like everyone, not just you or citizens, but we as a whole have forgotten that very important skill of listening. I know I'm a mother of four children, and a lot of times my kids don't want to listen to me. They cover their ears and they say, "La la 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 la." And they just, they feel like if they're not hearing or listening, then it doesn't apply to them. And hearing is simply the act of perceiving sound by the ear. And if you are not hearing impaired, hearing simply happens. Listening, however, is something you consciously choose to do. Listening requires concentration and paying attention so that your brain processes meanings from words and sentences. So I'm asking today that we all start listening to each other. I'm not a very good speaker, and so I get nervous when I come around people or I might not convey what I really want to say. But in this society, I feel like, and today especially, we forget that, you know, people really just want that one thing is to be heard. So since I was here the last time, I took a bit of time to get educated on why each and every one of you wanted to hold the office that you're holding. Now, I want to say I don't, I definitely don't envy you as I'm sure it's a complicated position to be in. And I appreciate that you put yourself out there to be critiqued and criticized and scrutinized and whatever else happens. But you still try to do your job. Your job as duly-elected public servant is to put your personal biases aside and to do the very best you can for the people that you serve to hold yourself accountable. I've read your campaign websites explaining what you would do if you were elected, each and every one of you. And I agree with many of those ideas. The only thing is I don't see many of those things being implemented in these unprecedented times that we find ourselves in. I also sadly see politics slowly creeping in and not just here, but all over our country. Well, last time I spoke with you all, I came to inform you of a situation which I felt was unjust. I appreciated those of you who took time to come to me and offer your words of encouragement. Mr. Christensen, Ms. Washington, and Mr. Schob. I left that day hoping that you all got a view of my reality. And I appreciated your thoughts and feelings and sentiments that you shared. It's best to remind ourselves that we, however, all live in the same world. And, but yet, we all live very different realities. I was very disappointed that day because it seemed as though you had already made your minds up. You know, time and time again, issues are brought before councils and boards and, and we, we, it seems like people, you all or the positions of the elected people, they've already made up their minds. It feels very closed off and like you don't listen. We all have our different, own different versions of what is right and what is wrong. And they differ from person to person and from society to society. The problem I believe we face is that we all hold our own version of truth to be the absolute and the only truth, when the opposite is quite true. For instance, masks are good because people think they're good. But at the same time, they're also bad because people think they're bad. What works for one person doesn't always work for another. And we all try to mold the world we create or the life that we want via many different means. So my reality is different from yours. I'm a mother, I'm sure some of you are, or fathers, or, I fight every day. I'm an entrepreneur, I own a business. I fight for my children, for my paycheck. And it seems like my reality is different from yours. My, my income is being affected right now in a very harsh way. And that makes me sad. I don't know if you guys could put yourself in positions like we when you're not experiencing that same thing. It's easy to set policy or listen, but when you really don't listen, it doesn't make people feel valued. So today I come to you with one of my very favorite movies in mind. Patch Adams. Robin Williams, you know, caught up and addressed the board. And he said, you know, "What are we so mortally afraid of? What's wrong with death? Why can't we treat death with a certain amount of humanity and dignity and decency and, God forbid, maybe even humor?" Death is not the enemy, guys. If we're going to fight a disease, let's fight one of the most terrible diseases of all. Indifference. Now, different people have different, or different experts have different opinions on what we all should do during this unprecedented time. The world-renowned experts in their field just met after a four-day conference regarding COVID. And they declared we all should go back to living normally, practicing simple hygiene and staying home when sick, no face mask or social distancing, and only to protect the most vulnerable populations with more protective measures. So in closing, let me go back. I'm seeing time and time again the same thing happening all over here. Like I said, in our country and right here in our city. People are finding the courage to come speak their passion, and it unfortunately feels as though it falls on deaf ears many times. People leave hearings like these feeling dismayed and invalidated because politics have entered these conversations. In closing, in the words of Paul Harvey, of whom I had the privilege of listening to every day growing up, he said, "We need to open our hearts to the simple common thread of everyone. Play nice with each other. Love and respect everyone and be kind even when life is scary or confusing. Take courage and be of good cheer. Learn how to be quiet so that you can hear and listen to others' voices. Leave the world a better place by living your life with dignity and gracefulness, loving one another." We need to take those words and do ourselves a favor during these unprecedented times and live by these very words. Thank you.
Thank you, Gret.
Well, almost good evening now at this point. Ben Madsen. We all know Madsen's bowling billiards. So I came up here. Obviously, there's some things that are going on in the background of my particular life and which happens to deal with my business as well. And it's not, it's, it's not private. We know what's going on here. There's, there have been a lot of things that have been going on, and I've been trying to, I'm not real good at writing speeches. So what I do is I say what's on my mind and I kind of just let things fall out the way that they fall out. I'm concerned, obviously, because the first time that I ever spoke in front of a city council meeting in front of all of you here, I pled with you to not rush a decision. But again, here we stand, and it was rushed. Decided to make, set a precedent, go against all of your rules and pass somebody because it was specifically what the mayor wanted. I, I'm still baffled by that. It makes no sense to me because you are the check for her power. And you gave her all the power. You were the check. We put our trust in you. We vote for you to have our backs and to listen to us and do what needs to be done. Listen to us. That being said, I'm sure that everybody's heard some rumblings down in the city office building concerning the fact that we are looking to recall every single position on this board as well as the mayor. Because you need to know that you are on notice. You do not listen to us, you do not have our best interests in mind. You do exactly what you want to do, and you do not hear us or listen to us, excuse me, it's a better way of putting it. This is straight-up tyranny when you do not listen to and you do not take into account the people who voted you into office. Our voices will be heard because we, the people, vote. We, the people, are in charge, and you represent us. Pen and ink do not get the job done anymore. We've written all of these little things down. We've passed all these little mandates. Excuse me, I don't want to use the word "passed" because a mandate is just a suggestion. No law. And yet, we cower because we're told to. I, for one, don't do that. I stand up against tyranny. I've been doing it from the beginning of this. I've been shut down. I've been, I've had my life threatened. I've been spit on. I've been told, "I hope, I hope you die of COVID." I don't give my address publicly anymore because people have drove by my house. I do not feel safe because I decided to make a stand against something, and I took a, I took a stand. So I can understand why some people cower. I get that. I won't. I refuse. Because there needs to be somebody that stands for common sense and decency. And that's what I'm doing. I will continue to stand in front of this city council and I will continue to let you know how dissatisfied we are with your decisions based on our wants and desires as we, the people. I'm not a very eloquent speaker, but I do know some people try to listen to me. Because I am a blue collar entrepreneur. That's all I am.
One minute.
I work hard every single day to make sure that I can continue to keep the doors open of my business. And this has been the most trying time that I've ever been in, in my entire life. And we may fail. I'm not going to lie. We may fail. And it's not because of anything that we've done. Nothing that we have done as blue collar people here in Lincoln, Nebraska is because of the tyranny and the lies that have been spread and the, and the exact power that was given to somebody who's not even from here to begin with. And with that, like I said before, everybody's on notice. Everybody. The recall petitions are being worked up at this point and we will have them out.
Thank you. Council members, Robert Borer, B-O-R-E-R, 65, 41 South, 59th Place. I'll keep mine short. Sam and I had the privilege of spending our Saturday two days ago with the founder of the biggest conservative pact in the country. He collects about a million dollars a month off of donations that average in size at $34. He gave us a game plan to accomplish what Ben just spoke of. And I'll leave that at that and share this short little testimony that I think I shared with you the first time I spoke back on the same date they referenced. I'll be 62 in two months. I am a high risk individual allegedly. But that's nonsense to me. But it's what you guys believe because you're all sitting there with masks on. I call them face diapers because they actually prohibit you from expelling what your body's trying to get rid of. Not just CO2, but bacteria and all kinds of other things. So I haven't worn one from day one. I have not worn a mask, one iota. I haven't social distanced, one iota. In fact, I've sent my social activity through the roof during this entire time, every chance I get. Because I'm looking for your boogeyman, this dangerous killer of a virus. And I haven't been able to find him. And yet I've been to Florida and back, Wisconsin and back, Colorado and back. I haven't worn a mask, I haven't social distanced. And I don't know why you guys are buying into this fear. I just don't get it. Maybe you're trying to perpetrate the fear so you have to set the example, I don't know. But what it amounts to is medical tyranny that you're perpetrating and that you're allowing this mayor to perpetrate and that you're allowing this hack of a, you know, health director perpetrate. And we're tired of it. Very tired of it. I'm tired of, there's a lot of people that are tired of this. Tired of what you're doing to our kids, tired of what you're doing to our businesses. And you can sit back and, you know, relax in your comfortable positions, but there are a lot of people that are hurting and they are very tired. And I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, I have a pension. I could sit at home and, and relax, but I empathize with my fellow man. I empathize with, empathize with my police. That's your, I guess you'd call her your boss because she, she tells you what to do and you do it. But she had those guys stand down when, when a bunch of thugs came in to terrorize our city. That's inexcusable. We can't wait to turn the tables. Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward at this time?
I move adjournment.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor, or please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.